Welcome to your town meeting. The town clerk has informed me that we have met the quorum of 50 percent. I declare, 50 percent, 50 voters. It's that kind of night. I declare the November 5th, 2019 special town meeting is in session. To honor the work that our service members do for our country every day, the town meeting invocation will be read by Richard Connor, who grew up in Agawam, went to the Army in 1966 to 69, and served in Vietnam from 1968 to 1969. He is 100 percent disabled through the VA, and in June 2021, he will be the state commander for the disabled American veterans. He volunteers with helping veterans filing disability claims to the state. After the invocation, he will have a question for those assembled. Mr. Connor.
Thank you. We have come here tonight in a civil assembly. As a community in a tradition that is older than our Commonwealth itself, we come together to make decisions about our community. As we deliberate, let us advocate for our positions, but not at the expenses of others. Let us remember that there is an immersed, excuse me, immersed gap between saying "I am right" and saying "I believe I am right", and that the neighbors with whom disagree are good people with hopes and dreams as true and as high as ours. And let us always remember that, in the end, caring for each other in this community is far more greater important than the difference we have. Thank you. So my question is, how many veterans do we have here tonight? I'd like to applaud you guys and thank you very much for your service. Besides the veterans, I would like to thank their wives, their partners, significant others, husbands, and I'd like to thank you for taking care of your veterans for all these years, and thank you for everything you do for them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I now welcome Glenbrook High, Glenbrook Middle School, eighth grader and Troop 90 Boy Scout, Sean Quillen, to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. He brought his fan section. Would all those who wish and are able, please rise and remain standing?
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Kindly, I apologize. If you are able to remain standing, I would ask that you please offer a moment of silence to remember and honor those who have sacrificed for our country and for those in our community who have lost loved ones recently. In particular, Long Meadow Parks and Recreation Commission Chair James Russell, LCTV Director David Bartlett, and power professional at Wolf Swamp and Center Schools and Town Meeting Vote Counter Lisa Gore. Thank you. Thank you. I welcome you to town meeting, our town's legislative body. To any first-time voters and to our many visitors, I offer a very special welcome. You might have noticed that we have 200 middle schoolers who are studying local government. I welcome them. It's my hope that one of the lessons they learn from observing this event is the ability of people to embody what we hold dear in our invocation. We also have another person who is learning about our local government, Professor Anna Shibelska of the University of Warsaw. We welcome you and others. Thank you. So as usual, I have some general housekeeping and announcements, rules of procedure to mention before we proceed to our 24 articles tonight. In the event of a fire alarm or other emergency, exits are clearly marked to my right there, to my left there in back, and for those of you in back, the doors that you came in at. Should you need a hearing assistive device, inform a teller or someone at the clerk's desks, and we shall loan you one. The back of the warrant includes a general list of rules of procedure that we'll follow, and rules of these, these rules of procedure follow Massachusetts general laws, our town charter, our bylaws, and a book called Town Meeting Time. To speak, wait for recognition from me, the moderator, and then state your name and address. All remarks are addressed to the moderator. Our visitors sit in the designated visitors section, including credentialed media. Non-town voter employees are sitting in the first row of the floor seats, and should we need to hear from non-voters, I will permit some non-voters to speak. These include town employees regarding issues relevant to their departments, and the following non-voters have received special permission to speak: Weston and Sampson's project manager, Michael Richard, Burley Grant, Finn O'Connor, and Joey Sapanic. Motions to limit or extend debate require a two-thirds majority, and our bylaws require that if residents want to stop debate, they can move to do so only after five have spoken in favor and five against. And the presumption is that those are speakers from the floor, not from the main mover of the motion or any opposition, lead opposition. There are three microphones at the front, excuse me, in the center aisle. One is marked red for those who are opposed to a motion. One is marked yellow for those with questions or emotion. One is marked green for those who are in favor, and people will line up at each microphone, and I'll alternate between or among all of them. And whenever possible, preference will be given to those who have not yet had a chance to speak. There's no cross-examination. If you have multiple questions, ask them all at once, and I will direct them to the appropriate person. I may permit a follow-up question, but again, you'll have those two shots at speaking. We have a bylaw that limits how many times people may speak. Comments from the center microphone, from those center microphones, are approximately two minutes, and I say it's a rough two minutes because I have a timer here, and I'll be listening as well to make sure that people kind of finish the end of their sentence. All remarks should be concise, relevant, and civil, and by that mean, I mean focused on the issue. Should speeches wander from their point or become repetitive, I will encourage the speaker to come quickly to the point or will call them to order. Deliberation involves sharing of accurate, relevant information, weighing advantages and disadvantages, and ought to end when no new information is available. We speak to the issue; we do not speculate on motivations. We do not reference people by name whenever possible, nor do we focus on the character of others. And we only speak on the topics that are in the warrant. There's generally no trash talk, for example, if that's not on the warrant. So should there be a need to call speakers to order, I will do that, and you will be directed to come to order. And when we're ready to vote, I will direct that the doors be shut. I have a special thank you first to offer to Jay Moynihan, who is serving as our town manager. Despite his brief tenure here, he's now participated in two special town meetings. Would you join me in thanking him? And now Pam, would you bring Jackie in, please? Jackie Sullivan is going to be entering. She's right now working in the clerk's desk, helping people to sign in. She's been here a little longer than Jay Moynihan, and I just want her to come in because she's so busy working. They've got to pry her away. Here she comes. So Jackie Sullivan, our assistant town clerk, has been here a bit longer, as I said. She's been here 15 and a half years. And without objection, I would like to offer town meeting's gratitude to her for her 15 and a half years of dedicated service to the town. She's taking a position, a similar position, in a nearby community. And whether you've gotten your dog license, marriage license, recycle center sticker, if you're running for election, or if you saw her at a town meeting tonight, you can, you are aware of how professional she handles her work. And Jackie, if you wouldn't mind coming forward, I have a certificate of appreciation for you. And would you join me in applauding that? And now we'll get down to business. Mr. Grant at the center microphone, yes?
Madam Moderator, I have a motion. I move to advance consideration of Article 24 to after Article 5 and before Article 6.
After Article?
After Article 5 and before Article 6.
Thank you. The motion has been made and seconded. You may speak to the motion.
I ordinarily would not ask for an advancement of article, but we do have three fourth grade boys who are going to be speaking to this motion, and it is a school night.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll come directly to a vote. The motion to advance an article requires a two-thirds majority. Would all those in favor, please raise your blue cards? Thank you. Would all those opposed, please raise your blue cards? Thank you. The motion passes by two-thirds. Declaration, majority affirmative vote. Article 1, Marie Andalitis.
I move the town vote to raise and appropriate $139,560 from the FY 2020 Community Preservation Funds revenues for CPA Fund Balance Reserve for Open Space, $46,520, CPA Fund Balance Reserve for Community Housing, $46,520, and CPA Fund Balance Reserve for Historic Preservation, $46,520.
The motion's been made and seconded? You may speak to it?
The Community Preservation Act requires town meeting to appropriate a reserve for future appropriation at least 10 percent of the estimated annual CPA revenue for acquisition and initiatives for each of the following three categories: open space, community housing, and historic preservation. Approval of this article will satisfy the requirement for FY 2020. Currently, FY 20 state matching share is estimated 11.57 percent of our current year's estimated revenues, surcharge $390,000, and other miscellaneous revenues $30,000, and state match of $42,200.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll come directly to a vote. This requires a simple majority. Would all those in favor, please raise your blue cards? Thank you. Would all those opposed, please raise your blue cards? Thank you. The motion passes. Majority affirmative vote. Article 2, Mr. Foster.
I, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $15,000 for the purpose of conducting a pavement distress survey that will provide a listing of the condition on all roadway segments in town along with a recommended improvement action and the associated cost of such improvements.
Is there a second? You may speak to it, Mr. Foster?
This is an independent survey would assist decision-makers of the roadway improvements in the prioritization and financial planning regarding the capital investment in our streets.
All right. Finance Committee recommendation, Mr. Maury Garrett?
Yes, thank you, Madam Moderator. The Finance Committee does not recommend Article 2. The Finance Committee considered several factors, the most important of which is that the DPW has a process by which they identify and evaluate streets and improvements that need to be made. The Finance Committee did not receive any evidence that there was any reason to step outside of that process or to spend additional funds outside of the DPW process that is already in place.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Mr. Foster?
Yes, I'd like to address some of the comments that were just made. We presently do not have the staff in our town structure to do the quality of the inventory that's being requested. This is a standard process that DPW facilities go through across the Commonwealth every one or two years. It's an in-depth analysis of the pavement at a professional level. We just don't have the expertise in the engineering to do this type of audit and cost estimating because we're not in the business every day of doing repairs across the Commonwealth. The study is the backbone of their program. So we were tasked DPW would maintain in our streets. We have to, or we should, provide them the proper tools for maintaining. And as I say, this is above and beyond what they can do. This is similar to me, like asking the police department to fight bad guys without bullets. And also ask the chief of the fire department to put out fires without hoses and water. This is a very basic, basic study that will help them do their programming. I do understand there's very few people in this room who've had the opportunity to deal with these studies. I personally have. I know the benefit of it, and that's why I stand in testimony of the support of this and other studies that help us do the preliminary engineering to make the town of Long Meadow even better than it is today.
Thank you. Further discussion? I'm not sure who went to the mic first.
Henry Lanewett, Massachusetts Avenue. My question is, it says, "or greater or lesser sum." What are the parameters of greater or lesser?
Hold on one second, Mr.? Oh, forgive me. Forgive me. So to answer your question, the warrant article is slightly different than the motion that is made on that article. The war, the motion that was made was for precisely $15,000.
Good evening. Walter Gunn, 1579 Long Meadow Street. A question, who is doing the independent study for the pavement survey?
Mr. Mazza?
Hi, Mario Mazza, DPW Director. Pioneer Valley Planning Commission is doing the study.
Thank you. Spot on.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll come directly to a vote. This requires a simple majority. Would all those in favor, please raise your blue cards? Thank you. Would all those opposed, raise your blue cards? Chair is in doubt. We will have a count. So I would ask the tellers to please go to each station. So what will happen is two trained tellers will go to each section. They will count each row. They will only count the yeses first. Please follow their directions. They will tell you what to do. Could I ask that the back doors be shut, please? Thank you. And no, no one is allowed to enter while voting is occurring, so please do not allow anybody else to enter. You're all set? When you're counters, when you're all set, please line up at the microphone to inform us of your count. And don't worry, folks up here, you will be counted. Mr. Elizabeth, you're counting these folks here? Yes. Please come closer. Who are these people who are entering? Watch where he goes. Have you finished counting over here, this front row? Have you finished counting this front, these front tables? Then you can go in line. Thank you. Have the reports of the counts for the yes? Please say what section you have counted, and these are the results of the yes counts first.
Rear left bleacher, five.
Right front bleacher, 11. Oh, sorry. Yep, 11.
House rear floor left, 18.
House front floor right, eight.
House front floor left and platform, 10.
Right rear bleacher, yes, eight. No's, 13. Nope.
We are only counting yeses at this point. And what was the first, the yes count? Eight?
Eight.
Madam Moderator, may I request a recount?
I'm sorry, where, I'm sorry.
May I request a recount in this section back here?
Which section back here?
This section?
Okay.
There seems to be a lot of confusion as to what they were counting and when.
Let me hear from the counter, please.
Sure.
Ms. Chandler, did you count that section?
Do you want our count or should we recount?
Can you speak in the microphone, please?
Do you want our count or do we recount?
I don't understand the nature of the confusion. Were there yeses counted? You couldn't hear? Okay. That section and that section only shall have a recount. The section with Mr. Shuttleworth and Ms. Chandler, they will count the yeses only. And please be seated. Mr. Gaffney, did you have a report from this section here? Dave, Dave presented that. Ms. Chandler?
These are just the yeses.
Yes.
21.
Thank you. Now you shall count the no votes in each section. It's not, and they need to do each row. Yeah, it should be. Why is he getting up? And please sit down. Brian? What's the question? Elizabeth, did you count this front section? What is your result from this front section? And hold the cards up high. You have, okay. Mr. McPartland?
Yes. House front floor left and platform, nine no.
Next?
Rear left bleacher, three.
Thank you.
Right front bleacher, six.
House rear floor left, 21 no's.
House front, front four.
Could you speak right into the microphone, please?
House front four right, nine no's.
Right rear bleacher, 13 no's.
Ms. Chandler?
House floor rear right, 28 no.
The motion fails. 81 yes, 89 no. Thank you for your patience as we did a hand count. It was indeed hard for me to assess. Thank you for your patience as we did a hand count, it was indeed hard for me to assess. Article three, Mr. LaCusa.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of forty-five thousand dollars to supplement the fiscal year 2020 operating budget for the fire department line item for firefighter salaries.
Motion's been made and seconded. You may speak to it.
The fire department has been notified of two retirements in early fiscal year 2021. The timing of these retirements will create a staffing shortfall until the positions can be filled and the new employees trained. This transfer would allow the department to hire two replacement employees on about December 1st, 2019, to fill the anticipated vacancies and have fully operational employees at the time of retirement. This will not add permanent full-time equivalent positions.
Any further discussion?
And this is recommended by the finance committee?
I'm sorry, sir, let me ask for the finance committee recommendation before we go to the floor.
This is recommended by the finance committee.
Thank you, yes, sir.
John Glenn, 50, Meriwether Drive. I'm just curious as to why the salaries for the two replacement employees wouldn't be covered under the existing budget which would have, for that department, which would have included the two more senior employees who apparently are retiring relatively short notice.
Jay, can you handle that at the ball? Could you handle that, which one of you?
Mr. Pasturzik will answer that question.
Apparently, these are future retirements that will be taking place, so you are actually going to have-
I can't hear.
Can you speak right into the microphone?
These are future retirements that are going to be taking place. So these people who are retiring at the early part of FY21 will be working along with the two that we're looking to hire. So we did not budget for those four employees. We only budgeted for the two who are going to be retiring.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll come directly to a vote, this requires a simple majority. Would all those in favor, please raise your blue cards? Thank you, would all those opposed, please raise your blue cards? Thank you, the motion passes, majority affirmative vote. Article four.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the following sums to supplement the fiscal year 2020 operating budget for debt service as listed below to cover the fiscal year 2020 debt service on the new council of aging facility. Maturing principal on long-term debt, three hundred ninety thousand dollars. Interest on long-term debt, two hundred twenty-seven thousand, five hundred and six dollars.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, you may speak to it.
This appropriation will cover the fiscal year 2020 debt service on the October 2019 bonding of the new council of aging facility. It was not part of the original fiscal year 2020 budget passed at the annual town meeting in May of 2019.
Finance committee recommendation, Mr. Garrett?
This is recommended by the finance committee. The reason there is not a recommendation appearing in the warrant is because at the time that the finance committee considered this article, the actual numbers, the monetary numbers, were not finalized. So the finance committee waited until those numbers were finalized and then we considered the article, but the warrant had already been printed.
Thank you, any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll come directly to a vote, this requires a simple majority. Would all those in favor, please raise your blue cards? Thank you, would all those opposed, raise your blue cards? Thank you, the motion passes, majority affirmative vote. Article five.
Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one hundred dollars and seventy-nine cents for the purpose of paying bills of the prior year.
Is there a second?
Second.
Finance committee recommendi... I'm sorry, you may speak to the motion.
Okay. As often happens, bills from the prior fiscal year unexpectedly arrive at the close of the books for the preceding year. The appropriation would allow the town to fully pay its obligations.
Finance committee recommendation? None?
This is recommended by the finance committee.
Thank you. This requires a nine-tenths vote. Nine-tenths. I would ask that people please be seated while we're taking this vote, so please take a seat immediately. Because ultimately, if I see any negative votes, we go to a count, just FYI. All those in favor, please raise your blue cards? Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your blue cards? There is one card. What's that?
I declare nine-tenths.
Okay. With only seeing one card up, I shall declare it was a nine-tenths majority affirmative vote. So we are now turning to article twenty-four. Careful. Uh, hold on one second. One moment, please. Article twenty-four.
Thank you, moderator. My name is Alex Grant, 54 West Moreland Avenue. Motion is to transfer from available funds in the treasury the sum of fifteen thousand dollars for the study of the design, layout, and location on town-owned land of an outdoor skate park. The park shall be designed for the use by people engaged in skateboarding, cycling, scootering, rollerblading, or similar activity.
Is there a second? The motion has been made and seconded, you may speak to it. And you had requested prior permission for three non-voters to speak. They have been awarded six minutes of time, and they will take turns speaking. Could I have somebody's assistance in lowering the microphone so that they may... You're going to speak first briefly, okay?
Yes. I'm officially the lead petitioner for this article, but this was really the idea of the boys that you're going to hear from. They did the research on this and they collected all of the signatures. I'm just going to make three quick points. The process we are following here is exactly how the new senior center was started, through a citizen's petition to fund a preliminary design and to determine the location. Number two, the skate park proposed here is to be done on town-owned land. The location will be determined through community meetings, input, just like the senior center. We're not looking to buy new land. If the town cannot find a spot without buying new land, it's not going to happen. Number three, finally, if you think that kids should be outside, should be independent and playing in the neighborhood without adults organizing everything for them, just like it was for most of us when we grew up, I would suggest that you should be in favor of this article.
Go ahead.
A skate park is a place with jumps, ramps, and you can use them to do tricks with your skateboard, scooter, bicycle, rollerblades. Skate parks are different sizes, but they are usually eight thousand to twelve thousand square feet, which is just a little bigger than a tennis court. This is a video from the news story about the skate park in Agawam. My friends and I go to the Agawam skate park when our parents are able to take us. Kids, teenagers, and adults are used at Agawam skate park.
I think the biggest reason to have a skate park is to have kids go outside and play. Parents used to have to drag their kids inside because they were playing in the neighborhood too long. Now, parents have to drag their kids outside because they're on technology for too long. My friends and I want a skate park in Long Meadow so we can get to skate park ourselves. We don't want our parents to have to arrange play dates and hover over us. We want to be independent and play in the neighborhood.
At the Agawam skate park, there are rules posted at the entrance. Nobody can miss them. We would do the same thing. Helmets would be required. There are over three thousand five hundred skate parks across the United States. Part of this study would help us understand and avoid any legal liability to the town. During this study, we would get a cost estimate and explore grant opportunities to reduce the cost to the town. The Tony Hawk Foundation is one organization that promotes skate parks and sometimes gives grants.
Thank you, any further discussion on the motion under article twenty-four? Yes, you'll have to line up in back. And could we have the lights back on, please? We'll start with the person at the red microphone.
I'm Mark Gold, 129 Avondale Road. At the risk of sounding like the Grinch who's stealing Christmas here, I'm not opposed to a skate park. What I'm concerned about is the process. I sit on the select board, this is the first that it's come to the select board in any way, shape, or form. The expenditure of fifteen thousand dollars doesn't say who's going to do it, we don't know if that's, if a study's five thousand dollars or a hundred and five thousand dollars, or something in between. We also have credits with the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, who does studies like this for us for nothing, because we have an allowance of certain numbers of studies. And I certainly would have preferred to go after that and see what we can get with the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission and the money we have afforded to us, allotted to us, before we go out and appropriate fifteen thousand dollars. We have no idea who can do this, how they're going to do it, and more importantly, how much it's going to cost. So I prefer to have seen this come through the select board or through the Parks and Rec Department and gone through and tried to use our available funds from Pioneer Valley Planning Commission and then moved on from there. And I think if you go back and look at the process that was used for things like the capital, big capital projects, for the senior center and things like that, we did use that other process.
Thank you, and actually, if you don't mind, I neglected to ask for the finance committee's recommendation, so we'll hear from that, and then we'll hear from you.
The finance committee does not recommend article twenty-four. The information that the finance committee received regarding the costs was that the park itself would be in excess of a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. One of the other factors considered was the utility of the park in the snow and the likelihood that the park would serve a small number of children. The determination of the finance committee was that the park was, would be a very niche interest, and for that reason, the finance committee did not recommend this article. The, most, more importantly, the monies for this article are not in the budget with respect to the levy limit, and the finance committee has a policy of passing the budget for the town staying within the levy limit so that we don't run afoul of the levy limit ceiling.
Thank you, yes, at the yellow microphone.
Stephen Metz, 171 Coventry Lane. Two questions. The first one is, how was the fifteen thousand dollar figure arrived at? And the second one is, why was the normal procedure not followed, including looking into alternate sources of finance?
Mr. Grant?
As I say, the, as I said, the, this is exactly the process that we use for the new senior center. It was a group of people in that case, that, in fact, they got thirty thousand dollars. I was on the select board at the time, select board didn't like that, but it turned out the community wanted it, and we're going to have a new senior center. As for the normal process, I don't think there is a normal process for a skate park. And that's why we have citizen's petitions. We've had other capital projects, other proposals that have been followed this exact procedure.
At the green microphone?
I'd like to speak, 38 Crescent Road, Brett Lukasik. I think it's a great idea. I think there's plenty of room down by the river where we're taking away the DPW lot. I think it's a great way to get kids outside and do things other than play video games, so I'm all for it.
Thank you, any further discussion?
Pete Landon, 5 Metterbrook. Where does Parks and Rec stand on this, Alex?
Parks and Rec, let me, the commissioner?
So since I'm-
Just your name?
Sure, I'm Margaret Ruckus, and I'm the current chair of the park board. Since I'm answering someone's question, is this the correct microphone for me to be at?
You can speak in the front here, but if you want to just stay there, either one is fine.
The park board was unaware of this proposal before the warrant was published. The park board typically works closely with the CPC after town stakeholders put forth a proposal in order to have data that allows the community to make their best choices. When the group meets with the park board, either before submitting the proposal or concurrently, we can assist with data gathering and sometimes dovetail their request with needs from other groups. This is typically how recreational projects, such as the Wolf Swamp Fields renovation and the master plan for Bliss and Laurel Parks, are funded and managed. We would appreciate the chance to work with whatever group, friends of Long Meadow skateboard fans, behind this proposal to gather data so that a coherent proposal could be made for CPC funding. We do not support a yes vote for the monies proposed tonight.
Any further discussion? Mr. Grant?
I mean, this is a little bit of a chicken and egg problem, and I remember this when we were on the select board and we were talking about the senior center. Because you can ask a million questions about a new senior center, you can ask a million questions about skate park and say, we don't know the answer. That's the point, you need a little bit of money to study it. And that's what we did with the senior center. Fifteen thousand dollars is a modest amount of money from free cash that can answer these questions. Otherwise, this goes nowhere. You know, unfortunately, town government is a place where good ideas go to die sometimes, and you need a push forward from the community to make things happen.
At the red microphone?
Kristen Carnahan, 311 Farmington Road, Long Meadows, Mass. Much like Mr. Gold, I'm not opposed to recreational opportunities being considered in Long Meadows' open and recreation space. So I like to draw the public's attention to an alternative, component, if I may, for consideration beyond the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission credits which were addressed. But every community in the Commonwealth is required to have a current open space and recreation plan. Long Meadows is currently lapsed, but it is, to my understanding, in the process of being reinvigorated in 2019, 2020, led by the Park and Rec Department. And so I would encourage, through that comprehensive town-wide exercise, which asks how we, as a community, would like to have our open space and recreational opportunities identified and prioritized over the plan's lifespan, that questions such as this be part of that inclusive exercise.
Thank you. At the green microphone? Excuse me. Excuse me. Nicole Sweeney, ninety-four Cedar Road.
Communities are obligated to invest in their industry. If Long Meadow were a fishing community, we'd be making sure that our docks were in great working order. If we were a tourist community, we would be making sure that our beaches were pristine and spending money on that. In Long Meadow, the children are our industry. People move here and buy our homes as we retire because this is the perfect place to raise our kids, to educate them. And it's why we invest in things like our schools, our parks, and this great idea that these gentlemen have here. I would say that this isn't just, uh, a great opportunity for a small number of children, but any kid who rides a bike, a scooter. I've even seen great videos of kids who are, uh, use assisted devices using these skate parks all over YouTube. And, um, I applaud these kids, and I think that, um, this is the kind of thing that our town should be investing in and that this is a good use of our money.
Thank you. Uh, we're going to alternate among the microphones. Yep, Ms. Metz.
Sandra Metz, one seventy-one-
Right in the mic. Right in the mic, please.
Sandra Metz, one seventy-one Coventry Lane. One seventy-one Coventry Lane, Sandra Metz. From the pictures that were shown, skateboards, and I've never been to one, seem to have a lot of concrete and ramps and kids jumping off with bikes. Do we have to spend fifteen thousand dollars to find out how much our insurance is going to go up when someone breaks his arm or has a concussion? Because the liability seems off the wall.
At the green mic?
I heard a lot about process tonight.
Name and address, please.
Oh, sorry about that. Armin Ray, uh, ninety-six Shady Side Drive. We've heard a lot about process tonight. And where we are here tonight is a process. We have all of our children here from the middle school. We have the children up front who did the ultimate process in the ultimate democracy, town meeting. There is nothing more democratic than town meeting. The will of the, the town voting on an issue that's important to them. And for this, they went out of their way. They got the votes. And I don't see anything that says, if we vote for fifteen thousand dollars for a study, that we still can't go to the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission or we still can't go to other organizations for that money. But it would be there in case some of those didn't work out. So I don't really see where, um, we wouldn't just spend the fifteen thousand dollars to at least support the children, show that this is part of the process. If it was brought up for the warrant a month ago, I'm surprised somebody didn't reach out to Mr. Grant and the children as well and just say, hey, this is on the warrant for a month from now. Do we want to talk about it? What the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission could have brought to us. Um, so I, I think it's a, a great cause. I think the kids did a great job. I think it's democracy in action, uh, here at town meeting, so I would build in force.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll come directly to a vote, and I'll ask, I'll wait until, uh, people are seated to take a vote. This requires a simple majority. Would all those who are in favor, please raise your blue cards? Thank you. Would all those opposed, please raise your blue cards? I'm going to call the noes have it. If, if there is a doubt, if there are doubts, if there are seven people who doubt my call, you may raise your doubts now, and we will go to a hand count. But my call is that the, the motion failed by majority affirmative vote. Hearing no doubts, we will move on.
Article six.
Article six.
I move that the town vote to appropriate a one million, two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars from the premium paid to the town upon the sale of bonds issued on October thirtieth, twenty nineteen, to pay costs of the LED streetlights project authorized by a vote of the town passed May fourteenth, twenty nineteen. Article fifteen, in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars. B, a landfill capping project authorized by vote of the town passed May fourteen, twenty nineteen. Article fourteen, in the amount of fifty-five thousand dollars. The council of aging facility project authorized by vote of the town passed May eighth, twenty eighteen. Article fourteen, in the amount of one million, eighty-five thousand dollars. D, repairing the Morningside Drive culvert project authorized by a vote of the town passed on May eighth, twenty eighteen. Article ten, in the amount of twenty-five thousand. And to reduce the amount authorized to be borrowed for such projects but not yet issued by the town, the like amounts and supplement each prior vote of the town that authorizes the borrowing of money to pay costs of capital projects to provide that. In accordance with Chapter forty-four, Section twenty of the general laws, the premium received by the town upon the si- sale of any bonds or notes there under less any premiums applied to the payment of the cost of the issuance of such bonds or notes may be applied to pay project costs. And the amount authorized to be borrowed for each project shall be reduced by the amount of any such premium so applied.
Is there a second? Thank you. You may speak to it.
This is administration action required under the amended MGL, Chapter forty-four, Section twenty, for bond authorizations made after November twenty sixteen. It allows the town to structure its bids on bonds being sold in such a way as to attract investors, competitions through the use of premiums, and thus lowering the true interest cost the town pays on the financing. As a result of the appropriations of the premiums, a lesser amount was actually borrowed than authorized, and the remaining authorized but unissued portions of the bonds are reduced by a like amount. The total amount available for expenditure for the projects equates to the actual amount initially authorized in the original bond authorization.
Finance Committee recommendation?
This is recommended by the Finance Committee. Again, uh, when the Finance Committee originally, uh, was presented with this article, the fund amounts that you see in your warrant were not finalized. So the Finance Committee was not able to make its recommendation in time to be printed on the warrant. Once the amounts were finalized, the Finance Committee considered, uh, the article in its final form and, uh, recommends the article.
Thank you. Open for discussion? Yes, at the yellow mic. Yes, sir.
Yes. Tom Shea, eighty-one Green Meadow Drive. Premium paid on a bond issuance is a somewhat unique concept, but think of it as the buyer of the bond gives Long Meadow more money upfront, and Long Meadow pays more interest.
Sir, is this a question or?
It's to ask them about how this is handled.
Okay.
So it's very common in municipal finance, but appropriate, but the, it is not free money. Appropriation is a strong word, and it's defined as granting a town meeting to expend money to incur obligations for specific public purposes. In Article fourteen in May, twenty eighteen, the town meeting appropriated fourteen million for bu- building the senior center. In October twenty nineteen, which is mentioned in this order, there was twelve point nine of bonds issued, one point one premium for fourteen million. So we're being asked to handle the one point one million of premiums, so that equals what was appropriated.
Could you please get directly to your question?
I will. The purpose of this article is to apply the premium for the financing. It has nothing to do with appropriating further money. The money for these projects-
Sir, I ask you to get directly to your question.
Am I correct in that this article should be applying the premium from the bonds and not appropriating the premium from the bonds? Because appropriating would be to incur additional costs.
Mr. Pasturzik, would you answer that question, please?
In the absence of appropriating this money, um, we would be stuck with an amount that we actually borrowed for, an example, the, the council on aging, which you alluded to, uh, where the authorization was fourteen million. We actually borrowed the twelve million, nine hundred and fifteen thousand. So without this additional appropriation, that budget would be cut by that one million, eighty-five thousand dollars, and we would not have the full fourteen thousand dol- fourteen million dollars for the project. I also bring to the attention of town meeting that this article, along with Article fourteen, was specifically written by bond counsel. Um, so I'm pretty confident of the wording being accurate, um, and, you know, bringing it forward as is.
Do you have a follow-up question? Yes, sir.
So, um, in the sample language from the state, it specifically says, "The amount authorized to be borrowed shall be reduced," excuse me, "paid from the premium in any accrued interest." It is also mentioned in the article, it quotes mass general law. It says, "Applied," right in the article itself. I don't want to be adamant about a single word, but it changes what's done here. We are not looking to appropriate additional money. It's applying the premium.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll come directly to a vote. This requires a simple majority. Would all those in favor, please raise your blue cards? Thank you. Would all those opposed, raise your blue cards? Thank you. The motion passes majori- uh, majority affirmative vote. Article seven, Mr. Foster.
I move that the town vote to transfer from the available funds in the treasury the sum of one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for the purpose of covering the cleanup costs associated with the July sixth, two thousand nineteen microburst that hit our town.
The motion's been made and seconded. You may speak to it.
On July sixth, two thousand nineteen, a microburst hit the town in the area of the town grid and surrounding neighborhood. As emergency declaration was declared by the select board the following day in order to, emergency measures were put in place to secure and clean up the area. A separate accounting was made for the related costs associated with the microburst. The appropriations of these funds would fund the cost incurred.
Finance Committee recommendation, please?
This is recommended by the Finance Committee.
Further discussion? Seeing none, we'll come directly to a vote. This requires a simple majority. Would all those in favor, please raise your blue cards? Thank you. All those opposed, raise your blue cards? Thank you. The motion passes by majority affirmative vote. Article eight.
I move that the town vote to transfer from the available funds in the treasury the sum of one hundred and twenty-five thousand, seven hundred dollars to supplement the phase one costs associated with the permanent capping of the Bernie Road and Tina Lane landfill.
Is there a second? Motion's been made and seconded. You may speak to it.
An additional eight hundred thousand bond authorization, authorization was approved at the May fourteenth annual town meeting, meeting, Article fourteen, in order to meet the DEP imposed timetable of November twenty, uh, second, two thousand nineteen for the substantial completion of this section of the landfill. However, actual cost determined through statutory bidding procedures has determined greater, uh, final cost. The DEP allowed the town to use the containment, contaminated soils for the DPT sub- DBD, DPW site as a capping material on this section of landfill, saving the town millions in disposal costs. This longstanding liability will surface again in the very near future. Phase two, as DEP mandates the proper closing of the remaining portion of the landfill and has no relationship with the contaminated soils found at the DPW site.
Thank you. Finance Committee recommendation?
This is recommended by the Finance Committee.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Yes, Summer.
Hello, Cynthia Summer, fifty-seven Farmington Avenue, and president of the Friends of Fanny Stevins Wildlife Sanctuary. Um, I would just like to ask any town official who's appropriate to just explain to the town meeting what exactly the capping entails and how it will prevent anything from getting into the waterways or the soils nearby.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Moynihan, DPW or, I'm sorry, um, NARIA, NISA, or you? Thank you.
Uh, James, uh, James Moynihan. Um, the, uh, capping involves a, uh, cap on, this is, the, the article deals with what is called phase one of the capping. Um, and it involves putting a, um, a plastic cap over the top, um, of phase one and then putting in, uh, soil above it. It's estimated to be about a thirty-day, uh, work effort, uh, followed up by planting that will occur afterwards with regards to vegetation, um, on top of it. It will take, uh, that will occur the way the timetable is right now. Uh, that'll occur in the spring. So the phase one work, uh, on the initial part of the capping will occur, uh, hopefully, within the next forty days or so, weather permitting. It'll be a cap on it, uh, with, uh, soil and, uh, grasses on top of that. And then they'll deal with, uh, as addressed in the second article, uh, phase two.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll come directly to a vote. This requires a simple majority. Would all those in favor, raise your blue cards? Thank you. All those opposed, raise your blue cards? Thank you. The motion passes, majority affirmative vote. Article nine.
I move that the town vote to transfer from available funds in the treasury the sum of one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to the FY two thousand twenty operating budget for legal expenses to cover costs associated with protecting the town's interests, dealing with the distribution of natural gas in the town and other legal matters associated with the site for the new PW, DPW facility.
Motion's been made and seconded. You may speak to it.
The town has and will continue to engage legal experts in the field of natural gas distribution in order to protect the town's interests in the public safety and public health. Also, the town is exploring legal remedies to help offset additional costs associated with the site for the new BPW facility. This appropriation is an upfront estimate of potential legal costs that may be incurred in protecting the town's interests.
Thank you. Finance Committee, please?
The Finance Committee recommends Article nine. There were multiple factors that, uh, first of all, when the Finance Committee initially considered this article, we didn't have it, uh, any from, information on where this estimate was coming from. What we were, uh, eventually, um, what we eventually discussed and what we were made aware of is that this estimate, um, probably represents, uh, a small fraction of the legal expenses that are going to be incurred eventually, um, dealing with these two issues. However, um, it is very difficult and impossible to project. The Finance Committee discussed the possibility of getting a closer projection, but it just, uh, after discussions, would determine that, that, uh, projecting how much legal expenses it would be to deal with these two big issues was not really possible. This issue is also going to come up in, with respect to Article fourteen. Given that, uh, the, um, the additional expenses with respect to the asbestos removal, there are going to be, uh, legal issues that have to be dealt with, with, uh, in terms of finding what options the town has to possibly try to recoup some of those funds or find out, uh, what happened and what went wrong. But in those discussions, it was determined that there wasn't really any way for us to have a firm figure on what the legal expenses would be, but that this, uh, amount was, um, was about as good as a small estimate that we could have at this time. So based on that, the Finance Committee recommended the article.
Thank you. Further discussion? Yes.
Alex Grant, fifty-four West Moreland Avenue. I guess my comments are part opposition and part question. I guess my comments are part opposition and part question, simply because, as I look at this, I really don't have much of a sense of why we're spending one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. I'm a lawyer, I'm familiar with the kind of legal fees that lawyers can run up, and I'm also familiar with what, from my prior service on the town boards, or select board, of what our annual budget is for town council, and this is a huge number in addition to that. Now, if this one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars is for the purpose of providing advice, that's a lot of money. If, on the other hand, it's in order to engage litigation, or potential litigation, then this is really just the beginning of a much larger amount of money, because one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars does not finance that much litigation from top legal experts. So I guess I'm saying I'm opposed to this just because there hasn't been enough information provided to us to sell me on what we're doing with one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars and why it's necessary, and is there going to be more coming down the road?
Thank you. Further discussion? Yes, sir?
Tom Shea, eighty-one Green Meadow Drive. I wish to speak to the portion of the article which deals with the new DPW facility. My question is, will the legal expenses be used to, one, defend the town from the lawsuit filed by the former owner of the DPW Dwight Road property? And number two, for the town to pay legal fees to arbitrate, litigate, or take any other means necessary to recoup the costs of asbestos disposal and other expenses such as delay damages? And what is the status of that?
Okay, so those questions. Ms. Angelides.
In regards to the first question, yes, we're talking about litigation. We're not just talking about consultation and preparation of where we're going with the litigation. It's still in executive session. And in regards to the second question, we are preparing litigation and pursuing any remedies we can in regards to the DPW project. So where we are looking at depends on what will happen in the beginning stages of litigation, and as it was said, we might have further requests in the spring. Hopefully, we won't have to go that far, but we are preparing for litigation.
Can I have a follow-up?
Yes.
Okay. My question had two parts. One was, is the town indeed defending against a lawsuit by the former owner of the Dwight Road property?
That's part of it.
Ms. Angelides.
Yes.
Okay. I will vote in favor.
Any further discussion? This requires a simple majority. Would all those in favor, raise your blue cards? Thank you. All those opposed, raise your blue cards? Thank you. The motion passes, majority affirmative vote. Article ten. Mr. Strange.
Madam Speaker. I move that the town vote to transfer from available funds in the treasury, the sum of forty-five thousand dollars for the purpose of providing the town's share, which is twenty-five percent of a municipal vulnerability program grant. The town has applied for a municipal vulnerability program grant for the purpose of mitigating future erosion and tree damage within town. Recent storms have caused excessive erosion to our ravines and gullies along with damage to the town's tree population. The grant is twofold. The first part of the grant will allow the town to conduct a comprehensive study of our fourteen thousand-plus public trees, along with providing a report and a software-based management plan. The second part will be used to conduct an engineering analysis of the Dwight Road drainage system and to provide alternative analysis and preliminary design services. The grant will assist the town in applying for additional grants for future works on the projects.
Finance Committee recommendation, please?
The Finance Committee recommends Article ten. At the time, between the time that the warrant was printed and when the Finance Committee considered Article ten, the Finance Committee had the opportunity to hear a lengthy and detailed presentation by the tree warden, who explained the necessity of this, of this particular transfer. So based on our interview with the tree warden, the Finance Committee recommended this article.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, we'll come directly to a vote, this requires a simple majority. Would all those in favor of the motion under Article ten, raise your blue cards? Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your blue cards? Thank you. The motion passes, majority affirmative vote. There's a person at, the yellow microphone, yes, sir?
Yes, Madam Moderator. I'd like to motion that we move Article twenty-two up after Article ten, before Article eleven, as a group of students here have a vested interest in that particular article, and they are due to be owned by nine o'clock.
Hold, hold on one moment, please. Just state, the motion is to advance?
Article twenty-two.
To this point now? I'm sorry, wait.
Yes.
After ten, before eleven. Is there a second? The motion's been made and seconded, you may speak to it, Mr. Allen Tuck.
Yeah. A group of students here tonight have a vested interest in this particular article, having to do with the environment. I think it would be great if they could hear it, as they are to be exiting the meeting tonight at nine o'clock.
Any further discussion? This motion requires a two-thirds majority to advance an article. I'm just going to wait till everybody is seated before we come to a vote, so please take a seat right away. All those in favor of the motion to advance the article, please raise your blue cards? Thank you. All those opposed, raise your blue cards? The motion passes by two-thirds declaration. We shall now come to consider Article twenty-two.
Just a little short here. Elizabeth Bone, thirty-four Elizabeth Circle. I move in terms of the article.
Okay, the motion has been made and seconded, you may speak to the article, but I understand you wish to make an amendment as well?
I do. I do make to, wish to make a couple amendments to the article.
And they are in writing, correct?
Yes, they are.
Okay. So make the motion first.
So many papers. Okay.
Madam Chairman? I'm sorry. Point of information?
Yes, sir. Mr. Point of Information?
Stephen Metz, one seventy-one Coventry Lane. Do motions come before the reading or after, before the discussion? I just don't know when to.
So the, so the question is, what about the, do the motions come before the reading? This article, Article twenty-two, is a lengthy article, and sometimes speakers can't, if, if no monetary amount is involved, in some cases, motions can be made in terms of the article. So what you see in writing is what Ms. Bone has moved. She would like to make an amendment to that, so she's going to be making the amendment first, and then we'll speak to that. Does that answer your question?
So if I want to make a motion, when should I not, it has, is pertinent to the article itself, not in its procedural? So I don't know when I should give it, or.
So what we'll do is, we'll hear her amendment first, that proposal. We will then vote on that amendment, and then you can make your amendment.
Okay, well, it's not an amendment, it's a, I was going to ask that the reading be waived, so when does that come?
Well, if, that's what moving in terms of the article does. It waives the reading of the article.
I know. But when, when should I make the motion?
You don't have to do it, because it's already been done. You're just that efficient. Ms. Bone, the motion to amend. Okay. I move that we amend. Okay. Sorry. Okay. I move to amend in the use regulation section to read, "Neither single-use plastic straws, unless being used to accommodate for persons with limited mobility or any other condition that necessitates the use of a single-use adjustable straw," comma, "or prepackaged drinks that come with plastic straws," nor. My second part of the amendment is under the effective date, just to follow earlier in the, earlier in the article, where it will say, "Effective date, all of the requirements set forth in this bylaw," and this is the section, "shall take effect on or after six months after this bylaw is approved by the Attorney General's Office of Massachusetts."
Is there a second? Okay, may I have those, after you speak to that motion? This is on the motion to amend, and this is adding in a provision to permit accommodate persons with limited mobility or other condition that necessitates the use of an adjustable straw or prepackaged drinks. And then the other one is regarding the time of taking effect to indicate that it is on or after six months after this bylaw is approved by the Attorney General's Office of Massachusetts. The discussion that Ms. Bone is beginning now is on those amendments, not on the main article. So we are discussing the amendments first. Ms. Bone?
Okay. I made the change of the, or I made the amendment to include the, to help people who do need the use of straws, who do have limited mobility, and who need the adjustable straws, and they really don't make them in paper straws. So that was one change. The other is, I had a few questions about juice boxes, which are everywhere in our community and the world, and they do come with plastic straws at this point, so I, I felt that I needed to add that in. The last part is just to have similar language that is earlier in the, in the bylaw, and I just wanted to have the same.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion to amend? Yes, sir?
Hi, James Ryan, one seventeen Crescent Road. Want to speak in favor of this amendment. One of the biggest concerns that comes up when a municipality or some other larger entity passes a ban on plastic straws, one of the biggest concerns that always comes forward is from persons with limited mobility. And so this is a fantastic amendment, and of course should be voted on, and it's our opportunity to pass one that makes sense.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion to amend?
Brian David Crawford, five Unit Strive. How we would determine if someone needs a straw for medical necessity?
Ms. Bone?
I would say that the person with the necessity would ask for the straw.
Any, is there a follow-up, or?
So there would be no penalty if someone like me were just to say, "I need a straw." They would give it to me fine, correct?
Ms. Bone?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Seeing no further discussion, we are now voting on the amendments, not on the whole motion yet. So there'll be two votes. One is on the amendment. All those in favor of amending the main motion on the article, please raise your blue cards? Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your blue cards? Thank you. The motion to amend has been approved. We shall now come to discussion of the main motion as amended. Or did you want to speak to the, the main motion as amended?
I do. I just want to add some information, I'm sure you see, but the reasons why we are doing this, the purpose is because straws are made of plastic, which take years, hundreds of years to break down, and are causing sea life to have a lot of issues. They release chemicals and toxins. This is also for styrofoam, and styrofoam is known to have carcinogenics in it, which leach into our water streams when they are not properly disposed of. And, let's see. Sorry. In U.S. alone, the amount of styrofoam used each year could circle the earth four hundred and twenty-six times. That's almost eighteen million miles of styrofoam cups, and it's a big part of our plastic problem in our oceans.
Thank you. Further discussion? Yes, Mr. Metz?
Stephen Metz, one seventy-one Coventry Lane. I'm sorry. Stephen Metz, one seventy-one Coventry Lane. I understand and support the concept of protecting the environment. However, I must speak in opposition to this particular proposal. The motion is premature, as there has been no evaluation of the economic or public health implications. Furthermore, these materials are ubiquitous and serve many purposes. The petitioners have not provided any effective alternatives for these materials, nor the environmental impact of such alternatives.
At the yellow microphone?
Yes, Mark Gold, Avondale Road, Long Mill. I have a question for the petitioner, particularly in terms of one of the lines in this that say, "The term also refers to clear or solid polystyrene, also known as oriented or rigid polystyrene." I understand the desire to ban plastic straws. I can understand the desire to ban what's called expandable polystyrene, some kind, you know, the, the white foamy kind of things. But if we were to do that, what's the, what are, what are we going to end up getting? Deli stuff added, armadas and Big Y, if it's not expandable polystyrene? And how does this jive with our push to increase recycling in the town, reduce disposal fees? We just put out thirty-five gallon trash barrels, try to get people to recycle more. Are we going to be ending up getting all of our purchases in materials we now have to dispose of, rather than recycle? And it's, it's literally a question.
So there's two, two questions, Ms. Bone?
So, first of all, styrofoam is not recyclable. So every time you buy something or get a, a container of food from a takeout restaurant, you need to throw that in the trash. That does not, so.
I understood the polystyrene.
I'm sorry, Ms. Bone is answering the question.
So when, if we get rid of it and have stores and things like that not selling it, that means it's not going in our trash stream, which does take up a lot of space, and. What was your second question? I mean, your first question.
Mr. Gold, the first question, please, thank you.
Yeah, I, I think there's a misunderstanding of the question. I understand banning polystyrene. It's the rigid styrene, the, the takeout containers for the deli things that, at, at the supermarkets that are, are currently recyclable.
They're not.
Hold on, Ms. Bone.
Sorry.
So the question is, does that apply to those containers?
Does it apply? Because right now it says, you know, this would ban the use of those. And I guess the question is, what would we expect those retailers to be supplying the materials in?
Ms. Bone, do you have an answer to that?
Yeah, sorry. So usually what happens in places that ban styrofoam, they use paper, like cardboard packaging for heated items. They're, they're also have other alternatives for those things.
I guess my problem is.
Thank you. Mr. Gold, Mr. Gold.
There's a confusion, though. She continues to use styrofoam, and there's, styrofoam is polystyrene.
Then, Mr. Gold, if she hasn't answered the question, she hasn't answered the question, then that's it. We're going to turn to the green microphone?
Kurt Friedman, twenty-four Ridge Road. As a registered professional engineer and member of the National Society of Professional Engineers, the professional engineer's ethics call for the support of sustainability measures. Also, as an adjunct professor of alternative energy, energy management, and sustainability at Western New England University, I support measures that support and encourage sustainability. I encourage everyone to vote yes on this warrant article. Thank you.
Thank you. At the red mic.
Yes, my name is Jim Moran, and I live at forty-eight Avondale Road. I, I worked in the plastics industry.
I worked in the plastics industry for 35 years and am familiar with all these materials. I guess I'm very concerned about the fact that this is targeted to polystyrene, which is probably the cheapest commodity plastic that's out there, so there are many other alternatives, and those alternatives are all more expensive, and so what's going to happen, it's all going to get passed through to the consumer. I guess the question I'd ask for the petitioner is just to...
Could we keep our remarks to statements in opposition first? Because you're at that microphone?
Well, I'm opposed to, I'm opposed to this article primarily because it seems targeted to plastic containers, and if you walk through any of our supermarkets, plastic containers are everywhere, and not to say that that's, can't be reduced, but you're targeting one particular plastic in general in this particular, in this particular warrant article, polystyrene. There are many other ones, polyester, and normally most of those things work to be more expensive. So I look, if we do this as a town, one of the things that's going to happen is some of our, you know, large supermarkets in town are going to be affected, and if I'm looking to buy product that's fresh and preserved, I'll go to Esau Meadow because I have that as an option. So I would, I would ask the town meeting to vote against this warrant article. Thank you.
Thank you. At the green microphone.
Sure. James Ryan, 117 Crescent Road. Last figure that I looked at, plastic straws account for roughly 7% of plastic waste worldwide. Are there other things that we could be doing? Absolutely. There are industrial processes that need to be changed. There are a variety of other means of plastic waste that need to be addressed. I may be voting in favor of this because this is honestly the least that we can do right now, and hopefully it pushes towards the resolutions that we need, the changes that we need down the line. This is where we begin. Thank you.
At the red mic.
Brian David Crawford, 5 Unit Drive. Anyone who knows me knows that I'm an environmentalist. I ride my bike all around town. I do all the things you're supposed to do to reduce your consumption, reuse what you have, and then recycle what you can't. As I showed when I asked the question about can anyone request a straw? Yes, anyone can request a straw. We're not going to be double-checking to make sure that they have a medical element because that would be a clear violation of the rights. Same with the grocery stores. This will not change anyone's ability to get a straw. We should be advocating that people choose not to use straws because it is an inefficient way to drink juices, water, whatever. Banning this isn't going to change our ability to get straws. We need to change people's mindset that they want to use them in the first place. Thank you.
At the green mic, yes.
Andrew Burkey, 32 Williston Drive. I just want to make two comments in favor of this. The first one is that there is a myriad of economic data that shows that changing the default option for people makes them actually change their behavior, and if we were to alter the default option to not having a straw immediately available, significant numbers of people would change, and it would in fact make a difference. The other one is, we've actually shown that this can work in town, which is to say that the bags we now use at Big Y are far more expensive than the free bags we were using before we were required to bring our own bags, and the town has completely switched over, and I see no complaints, and I see no reason to think that this would be any different for that. So I'm voting in favor.
Thank you. At the red mic.
Hi, my name's Ezra Kaim. I live at 134 Williamsburg Drive. I have two concerns regarding this proposal here. First is, I believe that the alternatives to plastic straws and styrofoam containers are not very mainstream, therefore the price in the marketplace is higher, and I think that could present a burden to our businesses in town, which could further be passed on to the consumers who shop at these businesses, costing more money to come out of their pockets. Secondly, I have experience in the waste and recycling industries, and, you know, we talk about switching to maybe paper-based takeout containers, which could be recyclable. However, food grease, when it gets into the container and leaves stains and whatnot, is automatically contaminated. So when that material gets to the material recovery facility, it is automatically disposed of and is unable to be recycled. Thank you.
Thank you. The green mic.
Lee Allen, 53 West Moreland Avenue. I think these are all fantastic arguments on both sides, but I think that we need to stop postponing the expense on the next generation when it comes to the environment. The costs that it will incur now are minimal compared to what they will incur 10, 15 years from now when they've got to clean it up. So I'm voting in favor of this.
Thank you. Next, yes?
Laura Murphy, 19 Tecumseh Drive. I'm voting in favor. I think that we need to send a message that Long Meadow is in favor of protecting our sea life and our oceans. There's plastic galore. There's been so much on the news about how we're killing our sea life. The coral reefs are dying. The paper containers are used at Whole Foods for the hot goods. They might get contaminated, but they definitely decompose much easier than plastic. I vote in favor, and I urge you all to do the same.
Thank you. Are we ready to come to a vote? All right. So, all those in favor of the motion as amended, please raise your blue cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your blue cards. The majority has it. The motion passes by majority affirmative vote. And you have the amendments? Article 11. Mr. Strange?
I moved, I moved that the town vote to transfer from available funds in the treasury the sum of $140,000 to supplement the fiscal year 2020 operating budget, DPW forestry account, for the remainder of fiscal year 2020 for the purpose of continuing to remove or prune potentially hazardous trees on town properties or rights of way.
Is there a second? Motion's been made in second. Do you may speak to it?
Two and a half months into fiscal year 20, approximately 66% of the forestry budget has been spent on removing and pruning hazardous trees throughout Long Meadow. An estimated $140,000 is needed to continue to safely maintain the trees, the town's tree canopy, including $20,000 for treating Dutch elm disease and Emerald Ash borer.
Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett, Finance Committee.
This is recommended by the Finance Committee.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll come directly to a vote. This requires a simple majority. Would all those in favor on the motion under Article 11, please raise your blue cards? Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your blue cards. Thank you. The motion passes, majority affirmative vote. Article 12.
I moved that the town vote to transfer from available funds in the treasury the sum of $25,000 to supplement the fiscal year 20 budget, DPW planting account, for the remainder of fiscal year 20 for the purpose of satisfying 200-plus tree planting requests.
2020? Do we need to say that? Is there a second? Motion's been made in second. Do you may speak to it?
As of mid-September, 246 public shade trees have been lost to storms or hazardous conditions in 2019. There are 200-plus open planting requests. 140 trees are expected to be planted in the fall, but additional funding is needed to satisfy the remaining planting requests in the spring of 2020.
Finance Committee recommendation?
This is recommended by the Finance Committee.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll come directly to a vote, which requires a simple majority. All those in favor of the motion under Article 12, raise your blue cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your blue cards. Thank you. The motion passes, majority affirmative vote. Article 13.
I moved that the town vote to transfer from available funds in the treasury the sum of $102,800 to the operating stabilization fund.
I'm sorry. Mr. Strange, could you make that motion again, please? Could you just make that motion again? Because that differed from the motion sheet that we were given? Could you just make that motion again? Thank you.
I moved that the town vote to transfer from available funds in the treasury the sum of $102,800 to the operating stabilization fund.
Thank you. Is there a second? The motion has been made in second, and you may speak to it.
Per policy of the Select Board, all free cash amounts in excess of $500,000, once the town's fiscal year's budget is balanced and related financial matters covered, shall be transferred into the town's operational stabilization fund established by vote of town meeting on November 18, 2003 pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40, Section 5B. This will help improve future credit rating opinions that currently state the town's financial position is adequate, but this factor is relatively weak when compared to the assigned rating of AA2. The August 13, 2019 Moody's Credit Opinion can be read on the Finance Department's webpage on the town website. Our latest credit rating from Standard &amp; Poor's, which was October 11, 2019, states a lower reserve position relative to the budget. We could lower the rating. This opinion can also be found on the Finance Department's webpage.
Finance Committee recommendation, please? Mr. Garrett?
The Finance Committee recommended Article 13. However, the amount that the Finance Committee originally voted on was lower than the amount that's been cited because the amount went up, as I've just conferred with our town CFO, because of an article that was not adopted by town meeting. So that accounts for the discrepancy in the amount, but the Finance Committee originally recommended this article.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll come directly to a vote. This requires a simple majority. All those in favor of the motion under Article 13, raise your blue cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your blue cards. Thank you. The motion passes, majority affirmative vote. Article 14. Ms. Angelides?
I move the town appropriate the sum of $1,300,000 to pay additional costs of construction and equipping a new Department of Public Works facility, and that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the Select Board, is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to MCL, Chapter 44, Section 7, 1, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town, therefore the costs of such borrowing, to be allocated among the town's general fund from taxation, sewer enterprise fund from sewer charges, water enterprising fund from water charges, and from stormwater enterprise fund from stormwater fees. Any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote...
Hold on one moment. Please turn the lights back on until we are ready for presentation. Thank you, Ms. Angelides, for pausing.
Less any such premium applied to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with MGL, Chapter 44, Section 20, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount.
Is there a second? The motion's been made. You may second it. You may speak to it.
Okay. Note that the Department of Revenue determined under their policy, the debt service on this bond authorization will be considered a debt exclusion and will be exempt from limitations of Proposition 2 and 1/2. During the early phases of construction, asbestos was discovered buried under the asphalt of the then parking lot of the former tennis facility. It was subsequently required by the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection to be removed and disposed of properly. Working with the DEP, the town removed in the most efficient manner the contaminated soils by using the material as a cover at one of the town's former, not properly capped landfills. The cost of remedying this matter was in excess of $2,500,000 and eliminated any cost savings achieved in the construction phase bidding process, along with any contingencies built into the project. This additional appropriation is needed to complete the DPW project. It is more likely, it's more than likely to be a bond authorization, which it was. To date, financing of the DPW project includes the borrowing of $19,860,000, $100,000 of the $21,205,000 bond authorization, Article 10, May 9, 2017, annual town meeting. The appropriation, Article 4, October 16, 2018, special town meeting, of $1,345,000 of bond premiums received on the borrowing and the yet-to-be-borrowed $1,345,000 of the original bond authorization for a total of $22,550,000.
Finance Committee recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends Article 14. During the run-up to tonight's town meeting, over the course of the last several months, the Finance Committee, more so than any other article on this warrant, has had extensive discussions. I'd like to thank one of our residents, Tom Shea, for the tremendous amount of information that he provided the Finance Committee with. We considered voluminous information on the article itself, the costs involved, the issues with the asbestos, as well as some of the controversies involving the bond premiums and the language of this article and other previous related articles. After considerable amount of deliberation by the Finance Committee, as well as voluminous, again, materials regarding this article were considered, it was determined that some of the misgivings regarding the nuances in the warrant articles themselves were addressed by bond counsel, and the Finance Committee ultimately was confident that in order to move this DPW project forward, in light of the unfortunate existence of asbestos, that this article should be recommended.
And forgive me, I'm just addressing the issue with the lights right now.
This is the update.
So, sir, if you'd forgive us, the, Michael Richard from Weston Sampson was to do a presentation. This is supposed to be part of the Select Board's presentation, and so that's why the lights went down. So I request your indulgence. We'll allow him to speak, and then we'll go to the floor. Mr. Richard?
Okay. Thank you. My name is Michael Richard. I'm from Weston and Sampson Engineers. I've been asked to give a very brief, two-minute presentation on an update of the DPW project. Work has been ongoing. The majority of the site work is well underway. The site is at rough grades with the exception of a few areas. The interior utilities and conduits are mostly complete, including connection to town water. The stormwater system is mostly complete, although not functioning yet because it's designed to function once the site is paved. That will happen at the end of the project. The building foundations are pretty much complete as well. The below-grade insulation is installed. Waterproofing, damp-proofing has been installed, and the foundations have been backfilled. The building steel has arrived on-site and is expected to be erected in the next coming weeks. The project is expected to be completed in the summer of 2020. The image that you see up above is the floor plan showing what the finished building will look like. The yellow area all the way to the right is the administration area. That's the area that's going to front Dwight Street. That's where the day-to-day operations will occur, where the residents will go, get your permits, pick up your recycling bins, et cetera. Moving counterclockwise, that's the direction, the general direction of traffic flow on the site. Moving counterclockwise, you have the vanilla area. That's the employee support space. That's going to include your break rooms and locker shower toilet area, et cetera. The green space is the shop space. That's where carpentry shop, sign shop, and other shop areas are located. Then to the left of that is the maintenance area. That's where all the... That's where all the vehicles will be maintained. And all the way to the left is the vehicle wash area. Finally, at the bottom of the screen, the gray area is the vehicle storage area. Next slide. And finally on the screen is the rendering of what the site will look like in the future. And now I'm going to turn it over to the Finance Director.
And so, the, one more set of indulgence. The, there was, the reason why the lights went down is there are two sets of slides, one from the engineer, one from Mr. Pesterzak. So we're going to have that slide advanced.
Just very quickly to bring town meeting up to date with the financing of the DPW facility. As you can see, back in-
Could I ask, could I ask that y'all wait until after the presentation before you leave? Because it's a tremendous disruption. Thank you so much.
As you can see, the original estimated cost of the DPW project was twenty million, two hundred and five thousand dollars. There was a debt authorization back on May ninth, two thousand and seventeen. Last August, we had borrowed nineteen million, eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars of that twenty-one million, two oh nine, of that twenty million, of that twenty-one million, two oh five thousand. And then later on in the fiscal year, at the October sixteenth, two thousand and eighteen meeting, town meeting authorized one million, three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars in bond premiums for the project. That gave us, at that point in time, the total authorization to expend, or the total authorization of financing of twenty-one million, two hundred and five thousand dollars. Additionally, currently on the books, we have an, we have a portion of the original authorization that has not been issued. That amount is also one million, three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars that we are authorized, still on the books, to go out and borrow for, which we will probably need to do. And then this, this article that is before you, for one point, three million dollars, has a new estimated cost of the DPW facility of twenty-three million, eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Pesterzak. If you'd like to leave now, you may. Thank you, sir. Could we have the lights turned back on, please? And so we have several speakers who are lined up to speak, so I'll ask those students who are leaving to be as quiet as possible, and we'll start the speeches. Yes, sir, at the red mic. Thank you very much for your patience.
Andrew Berkey, thirty-two Williston Drive. I speak tonight to express my deep frustration at the request for additional money for the DPW project. I find myself without faith in the ability of those with oversight of this project and concern that we are being treated like an automatic teller machine, one that is apparently believed capable of providing infinite withdrawals. I challenge everyone in this room to feel their own chests for an embedded touchscreen and dispenser slot. I expect no one will find one. We are not ATMs, and the responsibility for fixing the problems with this site should not fall to our wallets. The responsibility should fall to the entities in town tasked with managing projects such as this, though they appear to be abdicating that duty. An article in the Long Meadow News on October thirty-first quotes people with significant oversight at the town level in saying that, and I'm paraphrasing, "If only it wasn't for our bad luck, we would be on budget and on track." This abrogation of responsibility is equivalent to saying that the financial crisis of two thousand and eight had everything to do with the deadbeat borrowers and nothing to do with the banks authorizing and then repackaging those loans in the first place. This blame shifting is as bad there as it is here. We should have drastically reassessed the project as soon as the first asbestos deposit was found, or better yet, made sure we weren't exposed to this type of disaster in the first place. Asbestos is a chemical that does not appear naturally outside of earthquake zones, and the registry for such occurrences does not show Long Meadow as a known site. This means readily finding any asbestos should have suggested we might find more, and it should have suggested someone put it there. It should have also immediately prompted a search for both the extent and the originator of the deposits. The fact that we have continued to find pockets is directly the result of inconsistent or nonexistent oversight. We weren't dealt a bad deck. We just ignored the advice Kenny Rogers gives in his song, "The Gambler." The secret to surviving is knowing what to throw away and knowing what to keep, because every hand's a winner and every hand's a loser. We have a losing hand right now because we played it badly, not because it started bad.
And, sir, it's also knowing when to fold them, and you're at two minutes, so-
I just want to say that, no, I'm almost done. The only thing we do by passing this warrant is to codify looking the other way on site mismanagement. We should not do this. We are not ATMs. Please vote no.
Thank you. Next?
Brett Lukasik, thirty-eight Crescent Road. My questions are, what due diligence was done with this? Why did, all of a sudden, did we find a bunch of asbestos laying around? Wasn't there a company? I mean, if I buy a house, I hire somebody to look and find all this sort of thing hanging around. Now, we basically took this guy's property, and we didn't look at this stuff? I don't understand this. So I'd like to know who's responsible for actually looking into this stuff, and who is responsible for saying, "This is safe to buy." The other thing is, the legal fees were mentioned earlier. What legal fees do we owe now? Do we have any idea if there's any more little things that are going to be found in this, in this place? And do we know how much these legal fees are going to be? It seems like this thing keeps adding up and adding up.
Thank you for your two questions. Ms. Angelides, can you answer both of them?
The, we found a environmental issue on the property, and it was not, we, it was tested. There was, the appropriate testing was done, and the extent to which we found it was not found until the asphalt was pulled up. According to environmental law and how we protect ourselves and our environment, there is a requirement whoever touches the property has to clean it up. Now, who is finally resulting and have to pay for those? The cleanup will be decided in the courts. Where we are in our current costs, not that high yet. We're preparing for litigation, and that's why we're looking at the hundred and twenty-five thousand right now. Regards to, are we still going to find it? Yes, we still are. If you follow what we're reading, the newsletters that I send out, and if you follow our Select Board meetings, you'll discover that it's still in the soil, and we're, we have DEP on the site continuously, but we had to clean it up. So you said, "Stop the project." Now, once you find the asbestos, you must clean it up, and you must continue the cleanup. We are near the end of that, we believe. You have to realize, it's not something that you see. It's a very unusual situation. Because it was broken up into small pieces and put within the soil, it's not until it rains that it will suddenly appear. So if you go there, you test it. You could test here, 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 and it will be right over there. So it is a very difficult site to deal with, but we're working very hard to-
But my question is-
Excuse me, she's got the floor. Thank you.
Yeah. We're working with DEP on what's the appropriate way to clean up the site, and that's what we've been facing for the past, I would say, nine months.
You have a follow-up question? Mr. Lukasik?
Isn't there some kind of, isn't our way, isn't there due diligence where, before you buy the thing, you go out and test it, even if it does rain?
Ms. Angelides?
Yes, testing was done, and you have to realize is that the majority of this was not found. We even drilled into the pavement, but it was not found until the pavement was pulled up, and that's where we found that it had been disposed of underneath the asphalt pavement.
And was there-
I'm sorry, you've had two questions. There's a lot of other people who are standing to speak. Sir, you've had two que-
There was one that wasn't answered.
Excuse me, sir, you had two questions. I'm turning to the gentleman at the green microphone. At the green microphone, please.
Steven Marchak, sixty-two Birch Road. I'm in favor of this article. We've come too far to, to not, to look backwards. The other facility's eighty years old, and I realize that we're not an ATM, and that we're not going to fold it, and we just need to, unfortunately, look forward and hopefully get another eighty years out of this facility.
At the red microphone? Yes, sir?
Miss Moderator, Joe Mitchell, twenty Roseland Terrace. I didn't want to get up here, but there are many, many people that aren't at the meeting tonight that are totally frustrated with the people running this town. This should never have happened.
And, sir, I'm-
Everybody is frustrated.
I understand the fru-, I'm just going to interrupt you to caution, sir, I'm going to caution you, that we discuss the issues, and I under-
Yes.
I understand that people are-
Would you let-
Sir, I understand there is frustration. That is clear. What we must be careful to do is to speak on the motion. We don't speak about the character of anyone. So I encourage you to speak to the motion.
My last thought is I'm opposed to this, to give you any, any more money until you can prove to the taxpayers of this town that you can spend our money responsibly. Thank you.
At the yellow microphone, please.
I have, I have, oh, Patrick Carnahan, three-eleven Farmington Road. I have a question. Since asbestos is not naturally occurring in that area, it was obviously placed there by humans. And I guess the question is, you talked about courts will decide how this will be paid. I'm assuming that's civil litigation, but has a criminal investigation been initiated to determine who placed the asbestos there illegally? And then that might help also determine liability regarding costs later on.
Thank you for your question, Ms. Angelides.
In regards to that, DEP did file a complaint, and he has been, the previous owner was charged with inappropriate disposal. Regards to criminal, that's not something we can get into. We have, our legal team is looking into what our options are.
The follow-up?
Just the follow-up would just be, EPA would be the appropriate agency to file criminal charges regarding the disposal, illegal disposal of housing material.
So, Ms. Angelides, would you be looking to the EPA?
As I said, it's being handed to our attorneys, and we are working with DEP.
Thank you. At the green microphone.
Yes, my name is Mary Beth Bergeron, and I'm the Chair of the Building Committee for the Town of Long Meadow. And I can tell you that there isn't a soul involved in this project that hasn't gotten very angry and very upset over the situation with the asbestos. The asbestos actually had been identified prior to our acquisition, and it was discovered in the existing portion of the building that had not been damaged by fire. The portion that had been damaged by fire, the asbestos had been removed from. Fast forward to the time of the milling of the parking lot, after they milled it, that night it rained, and unbelievably, the next morning, the entire site where the parking had been was covered with asbestos. Clearly, that was a surprise. You cannot bid and you cannot anticipate what you cannot see if you're in the construction business. I'm sure a lot of you had have had work done on your own homes by contractors, and they discovered upon removing your kitchen cabinets or your bathroom floor that you had rot that was not visible, not visible from the get-go. That is exactly what happened here, and the bulk of this cost has to do with the concealment of that asbestos. Once asbestos is found, whether it's a small amount that's friable on heating pipes, or if it's asbestos that is found in the ground like this, it must be cleaned up. There was no choice. We had to move forward. It was very expensive. It continues to be very expensive. So where does the town now sit in terms of what to do moving forward? Do we, we own the land. It has a foundation in the ground. It has holes dug everywhere. The infrastructure is in for the water and the sewer. We need a new DPW. We have to approve this. It's one point, three million dollars, and I know it's a lot of money. And I know I've been upset about it as anyone in this room, but there really is no choice. What are we going to do with it? If this does not move forward, we have to approve this warrant article. Thank you.
At the red mic.
Alex Grant, fifty-four West Moreland Avenue. I'd like to provide a little more context and a little more of a further timetable on this, because I served on the Select Board from 2013 to 2016, when this project was in its infancy. And I've given a presentation at a previous town meeting about the projected costs of it. And in those 2013, 2014, 2015 time period, we're looking, based on the estimates that we had from people who'd studied it, a facility that was maybe looking at ten million, twelve million, tops fifteen million. And when this came to a vote, we were looking at something that was north of now twenty million, which was just, I've got to say, having looked at was mind-boggling. I mean, if you looked at that diagram, the majority of it is a place to park cars and trucks, okay? We're spending half of that twenty million dollars for a garage, okay? So, one of the questions that I asked the previous town manager in a couple of different ways and numerous occasions during different meetings was, have we ever thought about, what could we get for less? What could we do for ten million dollars? What we could do for eight million dollars? And the response was always, and I'll say that the majority of the Select Board approved this approach, which was, "We're going to get a state-of-the-art DPW, and whatever that cost is, that's what we're going to pursue." And I get that, and that's what we approved. What I don't think people understood at the time was the open-ended nature of this obligation, that there was going to be more coming down the pike. And what I don't think we understand at this point, and why I'm opposed to this, is there's no endpoint that I'm hearing. Nobody's coming forward to say, "Look, once we spend this, that will be it." And what I would encourage us to do here is to say no, which would force the town management that's handling this project, the contractors, to go back and to make cuts to this project, and not make it into the Taj Mahal, and to make it into something a little bit less. And I think that, that's the only control that we have over this. Otherwise, it's a bottomless pit.
Thank you. At the yellow microphone. Ma'am?
Margaret Rockus, sixty-seven Shady Side Drive. I've been involved in a seventy million dollar science building. I've been involved in a twenty-six million dollar renovation of a science building, and we have found surprises in those buildings. Typically, at that point, the person who's, the money person says, "Okay, we need to figure out what we can, what we can do to stay on budget." So what I'm looking at is, right now, we have roughly thirty-five million dollars going on in two construction projects. One is the senior, the adult center, the other is the DPW. If we could find five percent savings between those two projects, we would not need a one point, three million dollar override. So I'm asking, has anyone looked to try to identify between those two projects one point, three million dollars in nice but not necessary elements?
I'm going to ask, hold on, please. Marie Angelides, do you want to take that question, or is it, is it a finance question for Paul? Marie?
Well, I think you're talking about redesigning the adult center, and you're talking about redesigning-
Could you, could you speak closer to the microphone?
I'm not, I'm not talking about redesign-
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. So, it, the, has anyone looked at the cost savings from those other two programs?
We have been-
Is the question?
Both programs, they've been value engineering, and they have been trying to keep down the costs. The cost overruns you are now seeing at the DPW are directly related to that cost of the asbestos removal. He went through the numbers, and that is where we're finding the tremendous cost overruns. Now, we could go back and we could try to redesign both buildings to bring the costs down. Redesign is going to cost you more money. We've got to pull back the architects. In the meantime, every time we delay on each of these projects, it's costing us money. And we will, a lot of, we're seeing the contingencies there is because of the nine-month delays. So if we just, if the town meeting has decided they're not going to go forward with the one point, three, we still have to continue to clean up that site. We will not be able to stop on that site. What we will do is we will stop the building of the DPW. If you're asking us to look to redesign both buildings, that's to go to one point, three million dollars, you would have to redesign both those projects- you would have to redesign both those projects and they would be a delay on both those projects. One of the things we have run into is that costs have been going up on materials. And every single month we're delayed, we're finding the cost of materials are going up. And that's because there is a huge building boom going across Massachusetts and the country and these costs of materials are going up. So, we have a meeting every single week and our project managers are there, building committee's there, select board is there, and we're trying to fight to keep down the costs. What we have been hit with is a, I consider, an environmental disaster that's occurred in the town, that we had to stop everything and we had to put all our resources to it. So as we said, the cost of that cleanup, direct cleanup of the asbestos was $2.5 million. And then you're talking about more money on top of that because of the delays and the increases of the materials. So a decision was made by a whole group of people in town, stopping and changing this is actually going to cost the town more money. And that's why it was decided to continue, complete this project. We have everyone on there, we have the specialists on there from DEP to know how to handle it and they're down there constantly and we're trying to get it done in the most efficient and cost manner. And I have to say that everyone that's worked in it, many, many volunteer hours, have gone into, the building committee and everyone else, to keep their eyes on this project. No one is happy with the overruns, but it is legally in our hands as soon as we touch that soil. We are looking to the courts to try to find remedies for us and there are remedies out there. We just can't get that to it yet because we must complete what is happening on that site now.
A follow-up, Ms. Racaus?
I will tell you, in my experience, since furnishings and fittings are typically ordered later, that is where we have seen the ability to cut costs.
Okay, at the green mic.
Stephen Wise, 25 Hilltop Road. I'm in favor of this, of this vote for this article. Whether we have a cause of action or claims against the old owner of the property, we may, we may not, but that's not going to be decided quickly. It's not going to be an easy recovery. If we don't approve this now, we're stuck with the property, we're stuck with the project. If we don't approve it, we're going to have a partially constructed shell of a building on land that we have to maintain and we're still going to have an insufficient or inadequate DPW lot that we, we decided that we needed to replace. So, this is not an ideal alternative, but it's the best of the alternatives we have. We're this far into the project, we need to complete it and do the other things in due course. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Question at the yellow mic?
Yep. James Ryan, 117 Crescent Road. If this is able to be answered here, in the event that the town did not take action as was legally required, has anyone ballpark theoretically, were litigation brought against us, how much that would cost?
Ms. Angelides, can you answer that?
My understanding is we had to respond quickly by DEP or there would have been fines and our capping of the landfill has to be done within a certain period of time, which we're proceeding with. But they would have, we probably would have had action against us by DEP if we did not move quickly.
So the amount of the fines, no ballpark figure?
I don't know.
I can imagine there would be a great deal.
Follow-up, Mr. Ryan?
Yep. So, thank you, and that was the question, but if anybody has that kind of information, it'd be great to know. Thank you.
Is anybody else? Seeing nobody able to answer that question, we're going to move on to the next one.
Kurt Friedman, 24 Ridge Road. For the attorneys in the audience tonight, you'll recognize the Latin expression, caveat emptor. May the buyer beware. Comment was made previously that we couldn't see underneath the asphalt. Well, there's a wonderful technology called ground penetrating sonar that would have seen abnormalities underneath the asphalt. Going forward, I would recommend that this community use such technologies to examine future parcels for future development so that we, as a buyer, can be aware. Thank you.
Is this a question?
Just a statement.
Okay. You have an answer to that, the implied question? Ms. Angelides?
Borings were made through the pavement, I believe. Yes. Borings were made at several locations through the pavement. As I said, since it was scattered underneath, nothing was found.
Yes, sir, at the yellow microphone. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you, moderator. Stephen Foley, 87 Converse Street. Actually, I have two questions. One that probably Mr. Pasterzic can answer for us and the other one is for the board or for the building committee. So the first question is, is do they have an approximate cost of what it's going to be if this was to pass? How that's going to increase our residential tax bill? That's one question. The second question I have is, has any effort been made either by the building committee, the Board of Selectmen, any other town officials to engage our state senator and our state representative to work with the governor's office on funding to help, because there is state hazardous waste funding available and to offset some of the costs? Thank you.
Thank you for your first question, Mr. Pasterzic. The tax bill implications or...
I'll answer second while he's going to have it.
Well, he'll, first, first. Please.
Well, since I'm not sure of everybody's valuation, I'm going to let you guys do some of your own calculations. For every $100,000 that we raise, it would cost about four and a half cents on the tax rate. However, we also have to remember that this will be a bonded amount of, you know, $1.3 million in this particular case that would be done over 20 years. The annual debt service on that might be $100,000. So, if you take your valuation divided by 1,000 multiplied times 4.5, you would probably have your highest amount that would cost you in year one.
Ms. Angelides, on the second question?
Our state senator and our state legislator, Brian Nash, have both been able to get $5 million set aside in the governor's bond money and $3 million of that is aimed for capping the landfill. That's really going to help us. The money was not released last spring. We've already reached out to the governor's office saying, please release it this year. Between the microbursts and the asbestos and our landfill cap, we really appreciate the help. And I was told to start reaching out to the governor in February and we'll be letting residents know when we can start reaching out and that will be $3 million. We, of course, are going to look at any other funds that might be available for us.
Thank you. Mr. Shea?
Thank you. Finance committee, thank you for the earlier comment.
Name and address again?
Tom Shea, 81 Green Meadow Drive. Finance committee, thank you for the earlier comment. I just want to go over the costs a little bit. That's a little more in my...
Just to make sure you're at the question microphone? Do you have questions?
Yes.
All right.
I would like to ask a question clarifying the costs of the DPW project. 21.2 was appropriated in May. There were $2 million of cost savings at groundbreaking. So the expected costs were 19.2 million in June of 2018. I agree, we've been dealt a tough card on the land, but change orders have increased the expected budget and they comprise $2.5 million for asbestos, another $600,000 that was recently discovered for additional asbestos abatement for 3.1 million of asbestos charges. There's also in the budget $700,000 of delay or cost increases that are being pursued by the general contractor and the subs. I agree that the project itself is only about $200,000 in change orders, which is very reasonable for this project. So in summary, as Mr. Pasterzic pointed out, it's going to cost 23.8 million to complete, which is 4.6 million or 24% over the expected costs at groundbreaking. The project was expected to take 16 months to complete. It should have been done by now. It's now expected to take another eight months till June of 2020.
So, the question again is clarification on the cost?
Okay. So, first question, are my numbers and expected completion dates reasonably correct or tell me where I differ? Second, has a fixed price turnkey date certain contract been signed with the general contractor and its subs for the delay damages and what is that amount? And third, and most importantly, the town, did the town government know of the escalating costs and delays? And in the five previous town meetings starting last October through the previous town meeting...
Sir, I'm going to cut you off at that point.
Just finish question real quick.
No, you've asked, you've asked three questions and I don't, I don't...
No, I have to finish that one?
I don't know that...
I'll make it quick.
I don't, well, it's been two minutes and so...
Give me a half minute. There's a lot of money involved.
Sir, let's answer the first question first, the second question second, and then if people need refresher on a memory of the third question, then I'll turn to you.
Thank you.
Mr. Pasterzic, can you address that?
Tom, you may have to repeat some of those questions, but the first question I thought was...
No, no, hold it. Keep going, Mr. Pasterzic.
Was the first one dealt with the timetable?
Mr. Shea?
I asked you to be specific on the timetable. It's going to be now June of 2020, which is an additional eight months.
That's roughly a correct answer, yes.
Mr. Pasterzic. Okay, the second question was in regards to the costs?
The 23.8, yes, that's exactly what we're referring to as far as the estimated cost at this point in time.
And the quick clarification on the third question?
Okay, quick clarification on the third question. Why was the issue of cost overage, asbestos and delays not mentioned at those previous town meetings by the select board or the former town manager?
I'm going to direct that to Ms. Angelides.
This has been a moving target. Every single month, new things, like we originally put everything to the landfill, then we've now had to put some on the site. So when we found information, we have tried to be as transparent as possible, whether it's on the building committee or the select board, and letting us know. We have not needed to reach out to town meeting until now in regards to the money. We still have some money that we're bonding, but we feel this was an appropriate time and we're coming closer to knowing what the actual amount is in regards to the negotiations on the delays. We are still, as the town manager is saying, slogging it out because we're not going to give up one penny. We're working our way through every single subcontractor to see where the true delays are. As I said, every month that we're delayed because of having to stop the project to move asbestos does cost the subcontractors, the contractors, and subsequently the town. So that's why we're, we have a lot of people working on this project. So I do not have the final numbers on that. The negotiations are still undergoing. But we feel very strongly and we've sat down with the contractor and with the architects that the numbers we're giving you now are pretty strong. We've almost finished the excavation of the whole site. There's a few poles we still have to put in, but once that's done, there should be no more moving of the soil to find more asbestos. So I think we're pretty strong on those numbers.
I recognize Ms. Bergeron?
Yes, I would like to just comment on the intimation...
And just name and address again, please?
I would like to comment on the intimation that there's been a lack of transparency.
I'm sorry, Mary Beth Bergeron?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Mary Beth Bergeron. And the intimation that there's been a lack of transparency at town meeting or otherwise within the community. I personally feel that you had to have been living under a rock if you weren't aware that we had problems over at the DPW site. The select board meetings are televised. You can watch them also on Long Meadow Cable TV. The building committee meetings are open meetings. The minutes are all posted.
Ms. Bergeron, I'm going to ask that you speak in, if you're at that microphone, you're speaking in favor of the motion, not about people.
Transparency.
Okay, not about people.
Then I guess my last comment would be, we have expended a significant amount of money on asbestos, there's no doubt. And I would like to back up what the select board chair has said. We are very close to the end of this. There's no guarantees clearly, but we are very close to the end. There is a trench that has to be dug. Once that is done, we should be home free and putting walls up and we will not be dealing with any further asbestos issues. That being said, there is no guarantee. So the $1.3 million, we believe, would cover that and put a contingency back into the project that is, that is needed. You can't go forward with a $21 million property, construction job without having some contingency money. Thank you.
At the yellow microphone?
Moore Murphy, 19 Tecumseh Drive. This is for not sure who, the select board. I'm wondering if, in getting costs back from the previous owner, if insurance, he had a commercial property, he had commercial insurance and we could definitely get something from his commercial insurance if indeed he was found at fault for negligence, which in the past, he was done through, through the conservation committee. He had dumped earlier, I was at the meeting, probably 15 years ago.
So the question is, will we be able to recoup those costs through insurance?
Yes, from a past offender also.
Ms. Angelides?
As I said, we have our legal team. I will mention that possibility as well as EPA to them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir?
James Ryan, 117 Crescent Road. Whereas it appears that the, those in favor and those who are opposed, who have decided to speak or wish to speak, seem to have done so, if it's the will of those assembled, I would like to call the question.
Unfortunately, we have not reached the number necessary. We have four in favor, four opposed. There are a whole bunch of questions.
Sure. I missed reading a three, 317 must have been incorrect. My apologies.
That's all right. I'm verifying with the clerk. Yep. Further discussion?
Will this count as number two?
This counts as three. And there's a person behind you.
I thought the other one was two.
Follow-ups count as a turn, sir.
I'm sorry?
Follow-up questions count as a turn.
Ooh, okay. Sorry.
Yep. Yes, sir?
Stephen Foley, 87 Converse Street. Just a couple more quick questions. One, in the original contract with the contractor, is there in fact a penalty clause in the contract and penalties for delaying the project? And just to follow up on Mr. Shea's question, which I don't think we got a full answer on, is there a turnkey date firm that this project will be completed? Thank you.
Questions for Ms. Angelides on the penalty clause and turnkey date?
Penalty clause, I'm not really too sure if we had a penalty clause in regards to, I can't answer that question. In regards to the second one, the last time I was in the meeting, they said we're looking definitely at the end of June, beginning of July. Of course, if there's massive storms all winter and they can't work, or we have more microbursts in the spring, but they seem pretty sure that they're going to be able to complete the project. And trust me, the contractors and the architects can't wait to finish this project. They're looking forward to doing this as soon as possible and leaving Long Meadow.
At the red microphone, yes?
Kristen Sealy, 258 Tanglewood Drive. I would like to move this motion to a vote. I am opposed, I am opposed to this project because I do not feel that the 1.3 million bond will be given back to the voters and our taxpayers if we get any recovery from the owner or insurance that has, should be responsible for the cleanup of further asbestos.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
I got tripped up on the rules of the game, but I promised I would do this and I will. So...
Mr. Shea?
What I'm about to say might seem odd, given the previous discussion. The folks at the DPW do a great job in the town. The new facility is needed. I've been told that to change the scope of the project would entail significant charges and delay damages, especially since the prefab building is on site. I've not seen a full cost analysis, but based upon my experience with multi-billion dollar power projects, I think I know what the outcome is here. If you believe what I said, I firmly believe then that we cannot scale back the project...
Can you speak right in the mic?
I'm sorry.
Please, thank you.
If you believe what I just said, I firmly believe that it would not be cost efficient. We'd be shooting ourselves in the foot to scale back the project and not going forward with it. Therefore, I am supporting the warrant. I would like to see more transparency and disclosure going forward from the select board and new town manager, but I am in favor of this warrant as stated. Thank you.
If there's no further discussion, we can come directly to a vote. This requires a two-thirds majority. Would all those in favor of the motion under Article 14, please raise your blue cards. Would all those in favor of the motion under Article 14, please raise your blue cards? Thank you. Would all those opposed, please raise your blue cards? The motion passes by two-thirds declaration affirmative vote. There's one doubt. There's two doubts. Three doubts. Four, five. Six. Seven. We shall come to a count, and this is what I would like everyone to do. Please remain seated if you would like to vote. There is no one allowed to enter into the gymnasium. If you leave, you may not come back in. I would like our counters to please only count the yes votes. Please follow the directions of your counters. You will be asked in each row if you are a yes voter, and they will count row by row. They will count each row separately and then compare their tallies to the others. Please follow their directions accurately. And I will ask, uh, Ms. Mc, Mr. McPartland and Ms. Vortanian to start with this here. You're, you're, you're not voting on this one, we need a substitute teller who has not. Ms. Gertan, please come forward. This is on, on a conflict of interest, people who are in favor of something and do not wish to count, I do not have them count, so, uh, Ms. Gertan and Ms., um... Vortanian, Ms. Vortanian and Ms. Gertan, please count this front row first and go up to every table. In turn, come up close, please. So we're only counting the yes votes. Okay, have all of the yes votes been counted? We'll hear from the right, Mr. Russ.
The house front floor right, 11 yes votes. Uh, may I correct myself? Sorry.
Nice and loud, right, right into the microphone.
House front floor right, 13 yes votes.
So that's 13.
13.
Rear left bleacher, seven.
Right front bleacher, 11.
House rear.
One moment, one moment, please, one moment, I need you to back, back there, please. Ms. Gunn?
Yes. Right front bleacher, 11.
House rear floor left, 20, yes.
Ms. Vortanian?
Uh, front floor left and platform, 20, yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Right rear bleacher, nine, yes.
May, may I ask, uh, the, the back floor, Mr. Shuttleworth and Ms. Chandler, had you finished counting? Okay. Please be seated if you are voting. Ma'am, please, excuse me, in the back. I saw someone distribute a card. Please come here.
Mr. Chief Stankowitz? Could you please investigate the woman in the back in the gray sweater? She gave a card to somebody else, could you ask her what, why she did that? I saw her give a card to somebody else.
In, in the gray. There was a question about an irregularity, I asked Chief Stankowitz to check it out. He assures me all is clear, thank you. Ms. Chandler? All right, so I'm going to give directions to this back section one last time, and I'd like you to follow those very carefully. Mr. Shuttleworth and Ms. Chandler are, are going to be counting row by row. If you are voting yes, raise your card up high until they count you. On, only the people in that first row, first row. Once they tell you to put your card down, then you can put your card down. Then they will go to the next row, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So they will tell you to put your card down.
We have a number. Sorry.
I'd rather do it more and more and more and get it accurate, yes?
Okay, yes, count was 31.
Thank you. We will now count the no votes in the same way, row by row. Make sure you follow the directions of your counters. Are all the counts ready? Ms. Burke?
Rear left bleacher, two.
House front floor right, four no votes.
Mr. Russell, could you please go back and say it real loud?
This will be the house front floor right, four no votes.
House rear floor left, 10 no votes.
Right front bleacher, four.
Front floor left and platform, there were none, uh, no votes at all, no, no no's.
House floor rear right, 12 no's.
Rear right bleacher, 13 no's.
With a count of 111 yes, 45 no, the motion passes with two-thirds affirmative vote.
Where's everybody going, we got half of, half a warrant to do.
Again, it's not Hotel California, can't make them stay. Article 15.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to authorize the treasurer to borrow the sum of $2 million and to appropriate such funds for completing Phase Two of the capping of the remaining portion of the Bernie Road, Tina Lane landfill and related costs.
Is there a second?
Just point out that there was some word, there was a, some additions to that. The town appropriated the landfill from 1958 through 1979. The town's been working with the Department of Environmental Protection over the last 10 years on its permanent, permanent closure. Approval of the article will allow the town to mitigate the longstanding environmental liability and prepare the site for future use years to come. The DEP imposed timetable to complete Phase Two is December 31st, 2020.
Finance committee recommendation?
This is recommended by the finance committee.
Any further discussion?
Tom Shea, 81 Green Meadow, I'm going green again on you. Um, Article 15, additional $2 million to complete Phase Two, capping of Tina landfill. Just have a question on the history here. The town appropriated $800,000 to permanently cap Tina Lane in May of 2019. There was no mention of a Phase Two. Artic, Tina Lane probably would have needed to be capped in the next five to 10 years, but disposal of the DPW asbestos saved the town millions. On disposal, but pulled forward this $3 million. Mass DEP records from January in 2019 clearly show that Phase Two would be needed. Tie and Bond submitted documents for that permission to cap the landfill. I have a letter here from Mass DEP, and you can go down there any Wednesday, they'll show you the files, and all those files are pretty warm because of what's going on here. It's dated May 30th, but it referee, references January 4th, 2019, a draft comprehensive site assessment for the landfill, and it mentions Phase Two to be completed in October 1st, 2020. Phase Two should have been disclosed in May of 2019, I'll get to my question.
You're at, you're at the in favor microphone.
Uh, let me just, can I do a question too?
Go ahead.
Thank you.
Just, yeah, if, if it's, try to get to the question, though.
Why were the taxpayers not informed of Phase Two in May 2019? And can you confirm there will be no Phase Three, and hopefully we're done? My question is on transparency and disclosure once again.
Okay, so the question on why were, uh, town residents not informed, and can you confirm? Okay, yes, Mr. Gold?
My understanding, my recollection, was that in May, when the first phase was, was proposed and approved by town meeting, the warrant article was to cap a portion of the Tina Lane landfill. And this is the balance of, of the Tina Lane landfill. Uh, I believe that that was as clear as we could be at the time, and there was nobody hiding because we knew from day one there was gonna be multiple phases. I can state with as much certainty as anybody can state anything tonight that this will, will complete the closure of the landfill. This has been literally an on and off again discussion with the Mass Department of Environmental Protection since shortly after the 1979 abandonment of that, of that landfill, and all we were doing was, uh, postponing the inevitable, and it's come to now that we're paying for it.
Point of clarification?
Uh, Mr. Shea?
Mark, I appreciate that. My point is, in January, the permit was issued for Phase Two. It should have been disclosed. Maybe not everybody knew about it, but once again, disclosure, thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll come directly to a vote. Uh, once everybody is seated and the doors are shut. This requires a two-thirds majority. Okay, so I'll count the votes, and Mr. Gold, could you just kindly sit down? Mr. Foster, please sit down, I'm counting votes. It's a two-thirds, so I wanna have a good look, I know you're freezing, I know. What you all don't know is it's freezing up here. I don't know how warm you are, but we are shivering. All right, so all those in favor of the motion under Article 15, please raise your blue cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your blue cards. Thank you, the motion passes by two-thirds declaration, majority affirmative vote. Article 16.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer from water retained earnings the sum of $236,000 for the purposes of replacing water mains on Fairview Street.
Is there a second, you may speak to it?
Okay, yes, this proj, this project was a recommendation from the 2008 Tie and Bond report, and will replace a four-inch water main with an eight-inch main fitted with new valves, new service lines, and new hydrants. The project will improve the water's quality to the residence and capacity for fire protection.
Finance committee recommendation, please, Mr. Garrett.
Yes, this is recommended by the finance committee.
Thank you, any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll come directly to a vote, this requires a simple majority. All those in favor, please raise your blue cards. Thank you, all those opposed, raise your blue cards. Thank you, the motion passes unanimous affirmative vote. Article seventeen.
I moved, I moved to take no action.
This require, uh, this is, is motion been made and seconded, you may speak to it, Ms. Angelides.
There was a mistake made in the writing of this article, so it, it cannot be brought forward at this time.
Any further discussion? Yes, sir?
Yeah, my name's Steve Kennedy, I live at eleven Western Drive. Uh, Ms. Angelides states it was a stake, a mistake made in the writing of this article. Could you explain further the process involved, and who wrote this article, and what type of a mistake was made? Thank you.
Okay, this was an article I put-
Hold on one second. I'm gonna address that question. So, town council had informed us that the Community Preservation Act, General Law forty-four B, Chapter forty-four B, requires that the local community preservation committee make a recommendation on any expenditure of CPA funds. The language also requires that the recommendation be in the affirmative, so it's not a last, not just a report regarding a recommendation, um, but they must approve it. Uh, the community preservation committee has not met, has not voted to approve this article, and so town meeting cannot vote on an article on which the precedent conditions have not been met. And town meeting time, our rulebook indicates that the moderator may rule an affirmative motion out of order if those precedent conditions had not been met. And so I indicated to the select board that I would be ruling any affirmative motion on this article as out of order because the community preservation committee had not met, had not voted, as is required by state law. Mr. Kennedy.
Yes, uh, so can I assume then that it was the select board who had the idea of transferring these funds? Or was it some other board within the-
So, who, who had the proposal? Ms. Angelides?
It was a miscommunication. I understood that it had already gone through the CPC, and I had, did not understand the communication. So I, I take the mistake, it was my mistake, and we're not moving forward on the action.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll come directly to a vote, this requires a simple majority to take no action. All those in favor, please raise your blue cards. Thank you, all those opposed, raise your blue cards. Thank you. The motion to take no action passes by majority affirmative vote. Article eighteen.
I move to take no action.
It's been made and seconded, you may speak to it.
For the same instance, it's, it, the CPC did not vote on it, we could not move forward at this time.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll come directly to a vote, all those in favor, under Article eighteen, raise your blue cards. Thank you, all those opposed, raise your blue cards. Thank you, the motion passes, majority affirmative vote. Article nineteen.
I move that the town vote to authorize the Long Meadow Select Board to petition the Massachusetts State Legislature to revoke the May fourteenth, two thousand nineteen annual town meeting vote of Article thirty-six, whereby town meeting accepted the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter fifty-one, Section sixteen A, which created for member Board of Election Commissioners to replace the three-member registrar voters.
Is there a second? The motion has been made and seconded, and I want to draw your attention to the, the number on Article nineteen. If you read in your warrant, it says Article thirty-five. Ms. Angelides' motion is correct in that it is thirty-six, it was a typo. And again, because we vote on motions, not on the articles, that's why she made the motion in that way. Ms. Angelides, you may speak to it.
The Board of Election Commissioners is requesting that this acceptance of the statute be revoked, which can be, um, can be by town meeting, but only after a three-year duration. This request would accelerate the revocation of the new statute. Within the newly accepted statute, certain duties and responsibilities shift from the town clerk to the election commissioners, which they feel they are unsuited to handle on their part, three hundred dollar annual stipend. This was a decision, we thought, the select board thought they were fixing a problem that the registrar voters had from being three to go to four. We did not understand it would actually severely affect their duties that are now being done by the town clerk. In order to correct this error, we need to send this to our representative, and it needs to go, um, for a home rule petition in Beacon Hill. So we need this vote now, so the error can be fixed immediately rather than waiting the three years.
Any further discussion?
Madam Moderator, Steve Kennedy, eleven Western Drive. For approximately sixteen years, I was on the Board of Registars of Voters, uh, serving over two decades with three different town clerks. Uh, whilst I was on that board, all three town clerks and their assistant town clerks knew and understood Mass General Laws as related to, uh, Chapter fifty-one, Section fifteen and sixteen A, uh, as did I. My question is, who on the select board, who did the select board, uh, talk to to get confirmation that moving from section fifteen to sixteen A, uh, was something that the town should do? Because I know I wasn't asked, had I been asked, I would have pointed out the pitfalls that would come to the town. Uh, right now, we have a town clerk who is performing the duties that she used to perform. However, she's doing so in violation of statute. Because all of the duties and responsibilities, all of them, that used to fall upon the town clerk, now fall on the Board of Election Commissioners.
So, so the question is, who did the select board talk to?
Who did the select board get approval from or agreement from that this was a good thing to do?
Ms. Angelides.
Actually, members of the registrar voters requested that we move from a three to a four-person board. We sent that request to our attorneys, and our attorneys told us that we would just have to adopt this, we could go to the four. We were not, it was not told to us that it would require a substantial change in the duties of the registrar voters. After this passed, then our attorney realized, after talking to the town clerk and the registrar voters, this was an issue. And you are incorrect in stating that we are now doing this illegally because this actual, uh, what we passed in May will not go into effect until April, according to our attorney. According to our attorney, we are currently still under the registrar voters', uh, format, and we would not go to the other type until April. So right now, we are still legal in our-
Would you like me to read to you?
I'm sorry, so, so we're not gonna have back and forth, and I, I want to caution that all discussion flows through the moderator, not to each other. Mr. Kennedy.
Madam Moderator, the Section sixteen A states that immediately on acceptance by the community involved, Long Meadow, the town clerk will turn over to the new election commissioners all books, records, et cetera, et cetera. That's an immediate, it's in the law. And so, that's the way I read the law, and I'll be glad to read it to you, I have it with me.
I'm good. Thank you.
We follow in the advice of our attorney.
So, seeing no further discussion, this requires a simple majority. All those in favor of the motion under Article nineteen, please raise your blue cards. Thank you, all those opposed, please raise your blue cards. The motion passes, majority affirmative vote. Article twenty.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to amend the general bylaws, Article Three Town Procedures, Chapter two hundred, Town Elections, Section three dash two oh two Voting Hours, to state as follows. The polls shall be opened from seven o'clock in the morning until eight o'clock in the evening. The hour of opening may be early or afforded by the select board. For elections in which state officers are to be elected, the select board shall order the polls to be open such additional time as shall be necessary to meet the requirements of General Laws, Chapter fifty-four, Section sixty-four.
Is there a second? You may speak to it, Mr. Gold.
Yes, this change in the hours from an eight AM opening to a seven AM opening will accommodate the many registered voters who vote prior to going to work, or others who day, whose day gets much busier as it progresses. It will also make the hours of voting for our local elections consistent with those of the state and federal elections.
Any further discussion?
Question, Pete Landon, five Minute Brook. Can you assume on an article that the select board is in favor of it, the fact that it's on the warrant? Or is that a false assumption? We get to hear from the finance committee, but I would appreciate an answer.
Um, so, the way that I treat, uh, board recommendations is if the select board has put an article on the warrant, they have done so through majority, it's the assumption that the board is in favor. If that is not the case, uh, individual, if, if that is, if that is not the case, then specific members who voted against that, putting that warrant article on, may speak at the citizens' microphones. Yes, Mr. Landon?
Okay, madam moderator, so my assumption that they did it as a courtesy to get it out on the floor and get, and hear from a broader group is false, and that they are in favor. Thank you.
Any, any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll come directly to a vote. This requires a simple majority, all those in favor, please raise your blue cards. Thank you, all those opposed, please raise your blue cards. Thank you, the motion passes, majority affirmative vote. Article twenty-one.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to amend as follows, Section two dash six oh one F, Water and Sewer Water Service of the general bylaws of the town, to read as follows. One, add the phrase "by fees based on connection and measured usage" to Section two dash six oh one F, so that, as revised, Section two dash six oh one F of the bylaw would read as follows. Water serv, F, Water Service. The Department of Public Works shall install and maintain in proper working condition a water meter on each service, and shall charge for water by fees based on connection and measured usage. The DPW shall require a separate connection for each estate.
Is there a second? You may speak to it? You had a presentation, Mr. Zababa?
In lieu of what's written, or in addition to what's written in the warrant, wanted to make a very quick presentation to try to have everybody better understand this article. Just go to the next slide. The Water Department, just a quick summary of the Water Department budget, as you can see, consists of three components. There's department operating expenses, about a third, forty percent is purchased water from the Springfield Water Department, and twenty-six percent is the cost of borrowing for capital improvements. As you can see, we just did that in Article sixteen for Fairview Street. We borrowed money, next, next slide, please. So you can see here what the components are of each of those. In, in terms of the department operations, the water is the water we're buying from the Springfield Water and Sewer Department, and you can see the cost of borrowing is principal and interest, next slide. Okay, so the key area is that, that the department operations, they're both fixed and variable costs. The water is obviously variable, and what that means by variable means that the more you use, the more you pay, the less you use, the less you pay. We're showing that with, with the water. Uh, but, but the big part of this is the twenty-six percent of borrowing costs, those are fixed charges. If we used zero water, we still have to pay those, those costs, because we're borrowing money to do, do repairs. Next slide, please. So, as it says here, the, the issue is one of equitable, equitable payment, uh, for the fixed cost of the water system. Long Meadow's practice is, is that unlike many towns that assess the people who live on the street where water mains are, like we just did on, on Fairview Street, we don't assess those people, we don't ask each household to pay it, we pay it collectively. And we pay it collectively, so we hold the cost down, so everybody pays for, for all parts of the system. Next slide, please. But the, the number of vacant houses on the street in, in town, and also the number of seasonal residents, means that some people aren't paying their fair share of these capital costs or, or fixed costs. Next slide. So, this article would provide the billing of a minimum connection fee for all customers connected to the water infrastructure. Everybody will contribute to the capital cost of the system, so the system's available in town when they come to turn their tap back on. I've gotten, you know, I brought my water and sewer bill, we all get that. You'll see that as part of that, we have a line here that says sewer connection charge. We all have our sewers that are charged and on fixed plus variable, and we believe the same thing should be done for the waters, water system. Next slide, please. So what we're gonna try to do is, is, is ask that everybody be paid, or everybody contribute to the, some portion of the fixed cost through this change in the, in, in the warrant, or, excuse me, in the bylaws, next slide. And as you can see, that what we'll do is provide for the billing for everybody to pay a small fee. We've done, we did this back in, in two thousand fourteen or fifteen, two thousand eleven, I guess, something like that. Were we charging, it was fifteen dollars and sixty cents a household. It's not an exorbitant amount, but it is enough to allow us to, to both get everybody to pay. And whatever we collect in these fees will be reduced from the per-unit cost. The Water Department is an enterprise fund, we can only bring in as much money as it costs to run it. If we bring in some money equitably from the people who don't use the water, when they're not using the water, it will reduce the cost for the water for everybody else who does that. Final slide.
Okay.
So, so again, I'm just ask that all customers contribute, and, uh, that you support this, this bill.
Thank you. Yes, sir, are you making a presentation as well?
First, a question, and then-
First, a question, yep.
May I ask a question, and then?
Yep.
Okay. In the, the script-
Kurt Friedman?
Kurt Friedman, twenty-four Ridge Road. In the description in the warrant article, it says in the italicized print, that will enable the town to collect revenue that supports Water Department fixed and infrastructure costs from customers whose zero seasonal usage limits their participation in paying fixed and capital costs. In the presenter, if I understood him correctly, was saying that this charge is gonna apply to all customers, not just those who have zero seasonal usage. The number of customers that have zero seasonal usage is approximately somewhere between fifty and seventy-five. The number of customers in town is approximately five thousand seven hundred. So are we talking about a charge issued to some seventy-five customers, or five thousand seven hundred customers?
Thank you, Mr. Gold.
All customers will have on their bill a portion of their bill that will relate to the fixed costs, and a portion of their bill related to, to, uh, variable costs, so the actual use of water. People who use no water will continue to contribute to those fixed costs.
Mr. Friedman, follow up, sure.
Follow up question?
Yep.
Why wasn't, um, the description of this charge being applied to all customers presented in this warrant article?
Mr. Gold.
The intent was that it is all customers, and to the extent that that may not have said all customers, it, it's, it's my error. I think that it was intended that we'll collect revenue that supports Water Department and fixed infrastructure costs from customers whose zero seasonal unit, unit usage limits their participation. That doesn't say it won't, won't pull money in from people who are paying anyway, but those people currently pay zero, and the intent of this is to have them pay.
May I ask a third?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Do you think that this is unfair? If this warrant article's advertised as a charge being applied to all customers, I would think that there would be more than perhaps a hundred people in this room to decide this issue if they knew that this warrant article would apply to everyone in town, rather than, even if someone knew that there's only seventy-five zero customers? So, isn't this a misrepresentation?
So, the question of, the question of fairness, Mr. Gold?
Yeah.
Obviously, I don't believe it's a, a misrepresentation. It's clearly says this charge would bring the water billing system in line with the sewer billing fees that include a connection and usage component. To me, that's as clear as we can make it that it would apply for everybody. I don't believe it's misleading at all.
All right, so here's a, a technicality in our bylaws. So, here's a technicality in our bylaws. Our bylaws say that no voter may speak more than three times on a question without leave of the meeting. Mr. Friedman, you spoke three times. You had three separate questions, and so we will ju- if you wish to speak, we'll just do a simple vote. It's a simple majority, and it will allow you to speak this fourth time. So, if you wish to seek recognition, I will conduct that vote.
I would like to speak opposed to this warrant article. I would ask that those present allow me to do so.
I understand. Thank you. Would all those in favor of allowing Mr. Friedman to speak, please raise your blue cards? Thank you. All those opposed? Thank you. The motion passes, the vote has it that you may speak, Mr. Friedman. And thank you all for your indulgence on that, but it's our bylaws.
My name is Kurt Friedman. I reside at 24 Ridge Road. As a registered professional engineer specializing in utility rate design, I feel that Article 21 is not in the interests of our community for the following reasons. A, the advertised warrant article does not clearly tell us the bylaw change is asking for a minimum fee for sixty customers with zero seasonal usage or a flat fee for all five thousand seven hundred customers. The amount of the flat fee is not described. I feel that the Long Meadow Water Commissioners should have published a proposed water rate change well before this meeting and presented it to the public during the Board of Selectmen meetings. After receiving feedback from the community, they then should have come to the town meeting to seek a bylaw policy amendment. It is noted that we have had two previous cases where the Board of Selectmen Water Commissioners issued or proposed rates in error. Back in May 2007, they issued the ascending water and sewer rate policy, which resulted in some people's rates more than doubling. In May 2015, they, there was a proposal of a three hundred and sixty dollar flat sewer charge. In addition, we are presently charging our residents who water their lawns approximately six hundred thousand dollars in additional sewer fees. Our rates are unfair, inequitable, and a case of undue rate discrimination. Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 41, Section 69B, "The Water Commissioners or the Selectmen authorized to act as such may regulate the use of the water and fix and collect just and equitable prices and rates for the use thereof and shall prescribe the time and manner of payment for such prices and rates." Emerson College versus City of Boston, "The fees imposed for any municipal service must comply with specific requisites set forth by the Supreme Judicial Court. The fee must be paid by choice. The fee must be charged for a particular service that benefits the party paying the fee in a manner not shared by other members of our society, and the charges may not be collected to raise additional revenues as such, but to compensate the government entity for its expenses in providing the services." Conclusion: We can implement well-established and internationally recognized utility rate policies to provide needed revenue and resolve our water and sewer rate problems. We can have a much improved water and sewer policy without a bylaw amendment. Let us restore fairness, equity, and clarity to our water and sewer rates. Please vote no on Article 21. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Susan Altman at 661 Williams Street. Susan, could you hear me? Okay, I'm short, I know. Thank you.
Can we have the lights back on too, please?
Susan Altman at 661 Williams Street. This is deja vu, deja vu all over again. Four years ago, our Selectmen wanted us to change the water bylaw. They said it was a minor thing. If we had, we wouldn't be able to combat all the prices that they might have wanted. Seven years ago, the Selectmen ignored the bylaws and arbitrarily raised our water charge. Some people's six-month bill were a thousand dollars or more. The only reason the outrageous charges were rolled back were that we had not voted on the bylaw, and they had to change it because it was illegal. I say that this time, let's vote it down now so that we don't have any problems later on. Whatever the bylaw is, we should vote it down till we really understand all the aspects of it. Thank you.
Further discussion? Mr. Gold?
Yeah, I just want to try to speak in favor of this and not necessarily rebut each comment you've heard, because some of what we've heard, you know, is a little different from my recollection of what people are saying. But, you know, the issue is truly an equity one. We are in a situation where, and it's more than sixty people are away, we have many, many vacant houses. The issue is getting a minimum charge in here, a nominal minimum charge that will allow us to not just charge everybody based on usage, because what happens is it's the smaller users who get hit the most because our per-unit cost will go up and up and up. And the intent of this is to transfer some of the charges for the water to the people who go away, don't have houses, and expect to be able to come here and, not having paid for the infrastructure, use the infrastructure. I want to really reinforce that. If you look throughout the Commonwealth and other areas in the country, you'll see that a connection fee is routine and is usual, and a nominal fee is appropriate. So, I'd encourage everybody to vote for this article.
Any further discussion? Mr. Friedman, go ahead.
The fact that this is being brought up underscores a fundamental misunderstanding in utility rate design. First, the sewer pipes from your house to the street are paid by the homeowner. The water pipe from your home to the street is paid for by the homeowner. It's like going to the supermarket. Someone wants to buy one loaf of bread, someone wants to buy two loaves of bread. It's a consumer issue. We are, we pay fees for the water and sewer. It is not a tax. We don't have any community obligation. It is a fee, just like going to the supermarket. The use of water for residential is determined by how much irrigation water you use, certainly. But each person uses roughly twenty-seven units of water a year. Some households have one person, some have two. The average is about two point seven in town. So, the variation in use is simply a function of how many people live in the house. Some people go to work, and they flush their toilets in their office in Springfield versus Long Meadow, or people go up to the mountains of Vermont in the wintertime. That's their business. It's not the town. I've been looking at the water rates and usage for more than twenty years in detail in this town, and the proportion of people who are away, the number of vacant homes, it's roughly fifty, sixty people. It hasn't changed in all these years. It's going to stay about the same. So, once again, the issue of providing revenue for the town and the water, I agree with, but that should be handled through standard rate policy, and if you are seeking an amendment, the Water Commissioners, the Board of Selectmen should design the rate first so everybody knows what it is. If it requires an amendment, if you still want to pursue it, now come back to the town meeting and ask for amendment to address your new policy. This is being done, I think, in a reverse fashion, and that's where I think is a fundamental violation of due process. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll come directly to a vote. This requires a simple majority. Would all those in favor, please raise your blue cards? Thank you. All those opposed, raise your blue cards. The majority has it. Majority affirmative vote. Article 23.
I move to see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds in the treasury a hundred and ten thousand dollars, or a greater or less sum, to construct a sidewalk along the east side of Knollwood Drive, stopping at the intersection of Knollwood Circle, or take any action relative thereto.
Okay, Ms. Przyborski, could you take the language, or take any other action relative thereto? That's part of the article. Your motion needs to be specific. So, if you ax that last half of the language, so if you ax the "or take"...
Yep.
Or the greater or lesser sum as well. So, it's the specific amount that you want.
I move to see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds in the treasury a hundred and ten thousand to construct a sidewalk along the east side of Knollwood Drive, stopping at the intersection of Knollwood Circle.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
The motion's been made and seconded. You may speak to it, Ms. Przyborski.
I am here to make you aware of an urgent safety situation concerning the many families at Wolf Swamp Road School during the drop-off and pickup of students. Luckily, this dangerous situation can be fixed with one simple sidewalk. Long Meadow thrives on being a walkable town. However, there is a lack of a sidewalk in one of the most important places for these students, which leaves many students and parents, along with their younger siblings, stranded in the middle of a street with many large SUVs, vans, cars, and trucks driving down the road at the same time. And you can see up there, no, back. I'm on that slide for a long time. Knollwood Drive does not have an outlet, meaning cars must enter and exit at the top of the street, leaving cars to make multi-point turns at their nearest convenience while not taking into account the young, innocent children who are being forced to walk down the street. During drop-off and pickup times at the school, cars will stream onto Knollwood Drive and park along the east side of the road. Parents and students exit their vehicles and are made to dangerously walk up the middle of Knollwood Drive so they can access a single walkway that is often blocked by cars but allows access from the road up to the school. This walkway is approximately located at the W on the word Knollwood on the map. The existing sidewalks are drawn in red and clearly show the lack of a sidewalk in the one place it is most needed. Another issue that adds to this dangerous situation is that the kindergarten students are dismissed at 2:40, which is a full five minutes earlier than the rest of the school. This means you have your youngest students walking down the street during a time when there are many parents rushing to get onto Knollwood Drive to obtain a parking spot. For those of you who have not had the eye-opening experience of watching these poor kids walk down the road, I can only describe it as scary and chaotic. I fear for my own children's safety daily as I bring our oldest to school. I am left fearful that a car will suddenly decide to do a multi-point turn when my son is on his bike unprotected from the large cars. I've had to cancel taking my three young kids out for a bike ride or a walk in order to dodge the street from before 2:00 p.m., when cars start arriving, until after 3:00 p.m., from the amount of traffic this dead-end road gets. This is not Long Meadow. Long Meadow is supposed to be a safe and walkable town. Another parent, when asked about this situation, said that it just seems irresponsible, that for this many years, the street directly next to the school, where the parents are required to park to pick up their children, doesn't have a safe place for their children to walk or stand. In fact, this situation is even more dire during the after-school events, such as the school Halloween party and open house events, where families and students are now navigating Knollwood Drive in the dark while trying to dodge vehicles. The great risk here is that a parent, or God forbid, a student should be hit while navigating the chaos during drop-off or pickup or after-school events. Daily, we are putting our town students and their family members at great risk when they are left to walk in the street while trying to maneuver cars coming up and down the road, as well as the many cars making multiple-point turns up and down the street simultaneously. The sidewalk on Knollwood, of Knollwood Drive starts further down the road, way past where the cars are parked, and extends backwards to the dead-end street. The town is paying to upkeep a sidewalk that is pointless and doesn't connect to anything. But by constructing this needed sidewalk, we have connected Knollwood Drive to the rest of the town. Again, we are asking for the red sidewalk, where you can see the red, to connect from the end of the dead-end street to the beginning. As you can see, it is clearly a gaping hole of no sidewalk on the map. By simply constructing the sidewalk, we tonight have the choice to give our students the safety they deserve. We tonight have the choice to vote yes to connect Knollwood Drive neighborhood to the rest of Long Meadow and provide an essential safety net for all our students to get home. Frankly, the risk here is simply too great, and we must take action. Constructing the sidewalk along the east side of Knollwood Drive and stopping at the intersection of Knollwood Circle would allow students and parents to exit their vehicles and immediately access a safe walking path to allow them to safely arrive and depart school. During drop-off of our students, our students would be safe. During pickup, our students would be safe. During after-school events and nighttime events, our students would be safe. During the winter months, when snowbanks are present on both sides of the road, blocking drivers' views even more, and the road is even more narrow, the students will be safe because tonight you voted to make our community a safer place by constructing a simple sidewalk on the east side of Knollwood Drive. Next slide. This shows cars parked on both sides of the street during drop-off, leaving little to no room to allow traffic and students to get by. You also have a car making a multi-point turn in a narrow space right next to the pathway up to the school. Next slide. Take note of the chaos as you have the large red truck trying to turn around and exit the road in too narrow of a space, the cars trying to park, cars trying to drive, and imagine letting your child walk in the middle of all this because they need to get to school, yet there is no sidewalk to get them there. Next slide. This and the next slide show the small, single pathway that leads up from the road to the school. It is often blocked by cars, leaving no easy way to access the road or the school. Next slide. In the winter, this leaves parents and students trying to climb over snowbanks to get back into the road, to then walk down the road to their cars. And you're out of sync with mine. Back. Yep, so that, nope. Back. Back. Back to where the, it's blocked. So, you can see, you can't get up. There is no way to safely get up. And the next slide. This is a five-year-old that has nowhere to go. There is no way to get into the road, which he then has to ride in the middle of the road to get home. Next slide. This illustrates two students biking to school yet having to contest... You can keep going at this point, but I guess you can see the slides. It is a complete and utter disaster. This illustrates students biking to school yet having to contest with oncoming, large traffic in a road made too narrow by the parked cars. Right after this utility vehicle is where both students are left to cross the street to get back to the path I have previously shown you. There is no crosswalk. They need to cross as cars are coming. Just imagine if this sidewalk up the east side, this would help our students be safe. The next slide. You have families trying to navigate...
Please come to, please come to, please come to...
Well, I can't because you guys, it was messed up. To navigate getting their students home safely as cars take their multi-point turns in the vicinity of young children. In the distance on the next slide, you have families walking down the road. On the next slide, you again see the dangerous situation, and you can go, you can continue to the letter. You could continue, yeah. As you can see from this letter, on Thursday, August 21st, the Traffic and Safety Committee, which includes Sergeant Carl Mazafaro, the Traffic and Safety Supervisor of the Long Meadow Police Department, the DPW Director, and the Acting Town Manager, James Monahan, discussed the safety concerns I have mentioned, and they agreed that a sidewalk from the Wolf Swamp Road School parking lot along the east side of Knollwood Drive would be beneficial and improve pedestrian safety. You might hear that the Finance Committee doesn't support this. However, this is not just a financial issue. This is an issue of safety. It is that simple. It is not about the money. It is about the safety of our families, and I urge you to consider supporting our children. I urge you to consider the impact of the safety of this issue. Without a sidewalk, we as a town are just waiting for an accident, and without a sidewalk, when this accident happens, it will be too late. Make your vote tonight be about the safety of our town and the safety of all our children. Our children are our priority. Tonight, I urge each one of you to think about their innocence and vote to protect them. Vote to construct a simple sidewalk next to our elementary school.
Finance Committee recommendation. Mr. Garrett?
The Finance Committee does not recommend Article 23. The Finance Committee had discussion on this article. First of all, the, one of the issues is that the, with respect to the one hundred and ten thousand dollar figure mentioned in the article, there was no information on where this figure came from. The other issue that the Finance Committee considered, as you will recall with the discussion we had tonight on Article 2, the DPW... we had tonight on Article 2, the DPW already has a process in place for assessing, repairing, prioritizing streets, sidewalks, et cetera. The Finance Committee conferred with the DPW Director regarding this article specifically, and we were informed that that there are prior that projects, street projects are prioritized by DPW, that this particular project was not considered a priority by the DPW. And based on that, based on the fact that the DPW does have a process and the Finance Committee is confident in the DPW's process, the Finance Committee voted not to recommend this article.
Thank you. No, we have to hear from the floor. Yes, sir, at the red microphone, Mr. Foster.
Yes, Richard Foster, 29 Captain Road. I'm not against student safety by all means, but as was brought up by Finance, this project is maybe a valuable valuable project, but it's it's eclipsed past many of our planning elements in our community. It hasn't gone before capital planning. We have touched bases on DPW and all, but there's a whole process that that ranks and awards projects and prioritizes them with all the needs of our entire community. This is certainly not the only street in our community that could be benefited with a sidewalk, but we also have a monumental repair program and only a very limited amount of dollars to go along. Plus the fact of Finance said this is not backed up with any type of actual cost estimates. These are just price tags that were given to you. We don't know where the figures came from. We have no idea, there's no statistical information. This could very easily be a three or four hundred thousand dollar project. We don't know about the environmental concerns, you have other citizens on the street that have not signed off on the sidewalk. It's a large commitment to put a new sidewalk in our community, but I do applaud your efforts that I would say go back and fall into the process and do the further research.
Speak to me, please.
Pardon?
Just speak to me.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, I was facing, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Friedman.
Kurt Friedman, 24 Ridge. Even if this article is approved tonight, it would take time to construct it and maybe not even for this winter because of the almost the end of the construction season question. Has it been considered, instead of the pickup and drop-off on Nolanwood Drive, Nolanwood Circle, the pickup and drop-off would be on the north side of Wolf Swamp Road, which has sidewalks and it's a very long road, kind of similar to the pickup and drop-off at Center School? And that could be implemented right now, tomorrow, if if needed, at least at a short-term measure until this matter is resolved. So it could be either a short-term or long-term to use Wolf Swamp. So has the use of Wolf Swamp Road as a pickup and drop-off been considered instead?
Chief Stankowitz, I don't know whether you could answer that question or whether Armin Ray on the School Committee, but if you if you could answer that question about alternative pathways for pickup and drop-off, I don't know which one of you would be better suited for that.
Chief John Stankowitz, there is a pickup and drop-off line that is currently in place, and we have been utilizing it for approximately 20 years that I'm aware of. Some people bypass that line and look for alternative ways in order to drop their children off. Some of them do so on Nolanwood, some of them drop them off on Sheffield, have them cross Wolf Swamp Road in order to gain access to the school. But I know with the principal as well as the safety officer, that is our recommendation to use the line that is already established.
Armin Ray, 96, Shade Inside Drive, Chair of the School Committee. The School Committee has not taken an official stance on on this particular motion, but I will say that it was brought to our attention during the tour of schools early in the year. The principal clearly pointed out that she was concerned about safety, specifically on Nolanwood, had made some suggestions as to making some improvements to the the local area. Sidewalk was not specifically addressed at that time. We did talk about potentially doing a roundabout to address the actual issues that are there about the traffic, not necessarily the people walking on the sidewalk, which again, safety is paramount to the School Committee and to, I know, to the Chief, both Chiefs, and Marty O'Shea definitely is part of the Public Safety Committee, which we talk about these issues. So we have talked holistically more about how do we take away the traffic on Nolanwood as opposed to the sidewalk issue.
Thank you. At the green mic.
My name is Britt Van Vulcanberg, and I live at 71 Nolanwood Circle. So I have the wonderful opportunity of not only having my kids have to come down and use Nolanwood Drive, one of them still is at Wolf Swamp, but I have two that go to the middle school and at some point to the high school. And it doesn't matter what you do, if there's no sidewalk, my middle school kids have to ride their bikes down the road, or they have to get dropped off by a bus, their bus isn't going to go down Nolanwood Circle, so they're going to stop at Wolf Swamp. And for the next nine years at least, I'll have all three of my kids at some point having to walk up and down that street, and it is an absolute nightmare. I thought it would be great, we're living down there, hey, I can walk my kids up to school, and in the winter, you can't get sometimes three cars. I've had to call and they've had to block off the street because the snowbanks are in the middle of the street, you can't get three cars down. I'm concerned about if there's ever a fire, if there's ever a medical emergency, if it's during school drop-off or pickup, it's going to be an absolute mess. My kids, I mean, I'm 5'10", depending on my shoes, maybe 6'6"1", and I can tell you that trying to walk my kids down that street is frightening. My third grader is all upset because I will get behind him in my car and meet him sometimes and say, I'm just going to follow you home because I'm concerned with the way that you saw all of those cars doing their three-point turns and everything else. And I get maybe it's a small, select group of people that it's going to help that actually live down in that area, but it is frightening for me, and like I said, it's not like I'm a short person. I think that what you need to understand if you're saying, well, can people use the Live Line out at Wolf Swamp? If there's seven grades, K through six, or K through five, there's six grades, there's three classes, and about 20 people, maybe a little less in each class, I mean, you're talking hundreds of kids, and you want them all to go out one door? I mean, that's why Wolf Swamp Road is blocked two or three blocks 20 minutes before the bell even rings, because everybody's trying to jockey to get their kid out of there as fast as they can. They have signs that say no parking from here to corner, and you have people parking in front of the sign on the crosswalk that's going across Wolf Swamp, or going through Wolf Swamp and crossing Nolanwood Drive. It's insane. I really think that it's unfortunate that this had to be this late at night, but you know, really, the parents that need to be here, you know, with their young kids that would probably vote on this, are the ones that can't be here at this late at night. So I mean, it's really unfortunate.
You're at two minutes. At the red microphone, please.
Christine Regali, 81 Wilken. I had a young child, a five-year-old, going to Wolf Swamp, and I got in the pickup line and dropped him off and picked him up at the door. It wasn't a problem. Now, for the people who are going down Nolanwood, that's really not appropriate, and those are the people you have to deal with. Where I live now on Wilken, I'm right across from the high school. We have signs on Wilken, on Boklin. You can't enter them during school time. And maybe that needs to be done, and maybe there ought to be some police presence there to ensure that. Once you get that established, then it will become the policy. And maybe you just need to relook at the traffic and how it goes through there. And possibly, these people should take their issue with sidewalks to the Department of Public Works and get it moved up on the priority list.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
It's Mark Gold in Avondale Road. I guess my question is for our Town Treasurer, although I believe I know the answer. We're five months into our fiscal year. Tonight, at tonight's meeting, we just appropriated all our free cash, put the rest of it away into our reserve fund. Is there $110,000 today available in the treasury? Or do we need to wait until the spring till we see if we're going to underspend any line items on our budget to see if there becomes available money at that time? I guess my comment is to some degree, I don't know that there's money to do this, short of, as a Select Board member, cutting money somewhere else to make their available money in the treasury. So the question of Mr. Pesterzic is, is there money available?
Mark, there is money available. What it would do, though, it would, you have, the Select Board has a policy of having $500,000 after this meeting. It would cut into that amount, that's all, but there is money available.
Yes, sir, at the green mic.
Matt Shapiro, 32, Brookwood Drive. I think that we're all very lucky to live in a town where children are able to ride their bikes and walk around, and elementary school kids, and you see it, there's bike racks that are completely full at Wolf Swamp Elementary School. It's unfortunate that there's no sidewalk on this street. It's something that we certainly need. We're going to invest $20 million to house some dump trucks, but we can't put a sidewalk next to an elementary school. Let's get our priorities straight.
Thank you. Seeing no other people at the other mic, well, while there are people speak, you had eight minutes, so we're going to go to the people who haven't.
I got the, I got the, where I got the money from?
Ma'am, we're going to finish all of the other speakers, and then if there's nobody left to speak, then you can speak. Yes, sir.
Christopher Rinaldi, 60, King Philip Drive. I think the two things that weren't clear to people not familiar with this are, there's nothing pretty much on that entire land that they're requesting a sidewalk on. So on days where it's nice out, there's people parked there for an hour with their kids playing at the playground, on days where it's inclement weather, nobody wants to walk through all that junk that's now there, you know, it's four or five inches of leaves today, they bring their kid out on the one walk out to the street, and they then walk down all the way to where that red part is, because cars are parked all the way down there to bring their kids. So for half an hour to an hour every single day of the school year, this is the most dangerous place in Long Meadow for a child. So it's it's pretty important to consider that.
Thank you. Yes, sir, at the yellow microphone.
Andrew Berkey, 32, Wilson Drive. Being unfamiliar with this process, I realize there is a sort of a DPW process that was gone through. Is there something that prevents the residents of Nolanwood Drive from putting a sidewalk on themselves?
The, would the Select Board be able to answer that?
It's town property, so they would have to get town permission and go through DPW. You can't just go put, build things, even pulling down a tree or planting a tree.
At the green microphone, yes.
Hi, John Sharp, 19, Calvastone Road. With children at the school, I'm voting for this. I think it's the right thing to do, and with all the money that we've spent tonight, this will be one of the only things that you can say will save lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes?
Mike Prisborski, 110 Nolanwood Drive. I'm voting in favor of constructing the sidewalk tonight because ultimately, this is a matter of public safety. We're unfairly subjecting some of our youngest students and parents to a hazardous situation. These parents and students are just trying to reach their school and classrooms. Through no fault of their own, parents and students find themselves in harm's way due to the lack of a simple sidewalk. Frankly, the sidewalk should have been added many years ago. It's time for us to do the right thing, give these students the simple sidewalk they need so they can reach school safely. A few more comments. One is, the DPW manager actually initiated us on this pathway. I know some questions about process that were brought up, but we're following a process that was put in front of us. Many people in the town have helped us, by the way, on this, so thank you for that. I do believe the drop-off situation at Nolanwood has changed quite a bit over the years. In fact, school documentation was sent home this year saying, if you don't want to use Live Line, you can park on Nolanwood Drive. So people are being encouraged to use Nolanwood Drive, and then we now have a line of cars up and down this street that simply, the students cannot navigate at this time. That's all, thank you.
Mr. Foster.
I hate to be standing at the negative mic, because I'm not really trying to be negative, but the one point that has been brought up repeatedly in the discussion so far is that apparently we have traffic parking on a street that's not supposed to be parking on a street, and we're mixing pedestrians with it. Now, I realize a sidewalk may keep children off of the side, but sooner or later, they're going to cross that same street to get into the school, and they're going to go back and forth. And I don't know about children of today's age, but I know back when I had children at that age, they really didn't pay attention to sidewalks and crossing, they just went when they wanted to go. So I think I think the problem, as I said, it needs to go through a proper planning procedure, because I think there's going to be other factors brought out, which have been brought out very quickly here, about traffic management, that we need to do some changes up there on how we're administered, how it was even brought up by the School Committee of their concern for the traffic there. So the problem is bigger than just a sidewalk. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Welch.
Ann Welch, 43, Glenwood Circle. Guess my biggest concern is if it's been said that it did not go through any committees or something. Where did the estimate of the cost come from? And I don't know that I necessarily feel it needs to go through committee, but if we're being asked to spend the money, how do we know what that money's going for and to whom and who's running the show?
Thank you. Ms. Prisborski.
The DPW sent out the Assistant Town Engineer to give the quote of the $110,000. I then received that quote from the DPW and the town. I have spoken to the Police Department at length, the DPW Directors at length, the Town Engineer, the Assistant Town Engineer, at length about this. I have gone everywhere, and they were the ones that asked me to come here. Most people on our street, including the one house where the sidewalk would be in front of, signed the petition. They are in favor of it. It would go in front of the school where the cars park. There would be no worry of children not paying attention. They would be in the school, walk in a sidewalk, into their car, they would never have to cross the street.
Yes, ma'am.
Cameron Burke, 17, Woolworth Street. I live on a school street for the middle school, and I walk a kid to Blueberry Hills School. I walk because the traffic is horrendous. It's echoed through through all of the elementary schools in town at least. I understand that when I went to Blueberry Hills School, the traffic was much different. It was also K through four, and the class sizes were much smaller. The school is almost twice the size of what it was. It now has K through five. Wolf Swamp also has preschool. There are a lot of children involved. The fact that there is not a sidewalk is terrifying. I'm on a middle school street. Middle schoolers tend not to pay attention to any rules whatsoever. They're all on the sidewalk. So I think that that's, if you put a sidewalk, they will stay on it. They will, and most of them have a parent with them. You're asking five-year-olds who are about this big to walk in the middle of the street, and I think it's kind of sad, so.
Is there further discussion on this? We we have had six in favor. If we're ready to vote, we can vote. Y'all can speak, but we've had six in favor.
I'll keep it short. My name is Brian David Crawford, 5 Unis Drive. It makes perfect sense to put this here. I've never been on the street, I'm not a part of the Wolf Swamp family, just makes sense. I understand people are concerned about the process and then potentially not following the process. This may be the signal we send that says, make this your process. Get this done now. Thank you.
Is there anything new to add?
Yeah, I'll be brief. Also, Christopher Rinaldi, 60, King Philip Drive. I just want to add to my earlier comment that this playground at Wolf Swamp is the most active playground in Long Meadow, second most active playground in Long Meadow during the school year. There is more people, dozens of kids, every day after school for an extended period of time, that this, you know, exacerbates this problem. So, I mean, if you want to talk about traffic management and, you know, restricting access to that playground, you're just further, you know, a detriment to the community and the services that we can utilize.
Hi, Robert Saniam, 22, Cambridge Circle. I have to pick up my kids at Wolf Swamp in the afternoons, and I can tell you, every day when I get onto that street and I'm walking my children, I have to think to myself, should I be in front of them? Should I be behind them? They have their backpacks. I've got the cars on the right that are already parked. I have cars coming by, and every once in a while, and this was not shown in any of those those pictures, there's a third car trying to get through. So you have three lanes of traffic trying to get through a small street, trying to make sure that no one's pulling out. And for people who think, well, why aren't you using the car line on Wolf Swamp? Well, let me tell you something. Wolf Swamp, that's pretty scary too. You're sitting there on Wolf Swamp waiting to pick up your child, and there are cars coming past you, and then there's another lane coming this way, and on Wolf Swamp Road, trucks are using Wolf Swamp Road. That is very narrow as well. All right? I don't understand why Wolf Swamp School is the only school in town without a sidewalk in front of it. It doesn't make any sense. And like Mr. Rinaldi said the first time he got up, that area is the most dangerous place in Long Meadow every half hour, Monday through Friday. And if you have never seen it, it is a sight to see. Thank you.
Thank you. If we're ready to come to a vote, we can, we can do that. All right. So I would ask that all in favor, please raise your blue cards. Thank you. All those opposed, raise your blue cards. The motion passes. Majority affirmative vote. Is there a motion to dissolve? So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of dissolving the special town meeting, raise your blue cards. All those opposed, raise your blue cards. The ayes have it. I declare the Fall Town Meeting dissolved.